I'd like to call this meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education to order for January 23, 2018. Present is Ms. Pico, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, and Mr. Peterson. Mrs. Leeper planned a vacation like 10 months ago, so she will not be here for today's meeting or Thursday's meeting. So she has an excused absence. I ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 On your agenda, you will see the order of our discussion in the pages, related pages. Then, of course, public comment, and not necessarily shown on the agenda, but to remind you that on Tuesday night, prior to the Thursday adoption of the budget, we ask board members to give a heads up to the board, as well as the staff, as if they're going to propose any changes, whether that's in addition to the budget, a subtraction from the budget, or reallocation of line items from one area to another. And so we'll allow time for that. I'm hoping that we might use from now until 9:30 to go through more Q and A, and then at 9:30, take a break and let the public have any comments that they want to us, and then come back for either final Q and A, but allowing for enough time for board members who may want to suggest changes to be able to suggest changes. And the only rule, if you will, is that your changes have to be with enough clarity to allow our Director of Finance to accurately say, here's what the cost impact, plus, minus, or shift, is of your proposed change. And so if it's a simple, all of the money is on one line, and you're talking about a small dollar amount, well, that's easy. But if you're talking about a program whose costs are spread over various lines, salary and benefits and supplies and transportation and whatnot, that requires more research. So if the clarity is not here tonight, you can count on the Director of Finance probably getting in touch with you and saying, I want to make sure I understand what it is that you're proposing. So with that, if there's any questions on the night's process, seeing none, we will start with the review of section on revenue, pages 13 to 23. And the same thing, if you have dozens of questions, try and be respectful to other board members and ask some of them, and then allow other board members to ask their questions, and then we will come back to you if you still have outstanding questions. Anybody have questions or comments on the revenue section? Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli.
I believe just two questions. The first, and I may regret asking this, because I think it's now been explained to us a few times, so I completely put it on me that I'm not quite getting it. But as reading over the explanation, in multiple questions, usually it was affiliated with, I think it was sped transportation, as well as excess cost, or maybe it's the two. The comment was made that numbers are increased because of an accounting issue, that how they're being accounted for is being done differently, so something looks larger that wasn't. And where I'm specifically targeting income, I had always read the book that what was in everything except the income section was gross expense. Income was separate, and at the end, it would come together with our total budget request. With that in mind, if those are two separate issues, why would the allocation of an income have anything to do with what we look at as a gross number?
And so I believe that the question is...
And I'm open to that question being rephrased.
Is when you apply income, some accounting processes will say, we will apply the income to the expense line and include in the town-funded budget only the net expense.
Correct.
And other times, an accounting process may be different. And that might be where the confusion is, and would the Director of Finance come forward and...
That exactly phrases what my question is.
Help Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli get an accounting degree.
So, any cost related to excess cost is in the budget as a net expense?
Okay.
After deduction of the income.
Then...
So when you take, so when it's net, and you take, you remove the income that you normally apply to that account away from it, it increases it. It increases the expenses.
Okay, so everything covered by excess cost, that will be the case for it? Okay.
So by example, in the past budgets, where you might see a line item for OTPT related to something, I'm just using that as an example, what you're looking at is the net cost, not what it's actually costing us. You'd have to know how much they allocated to each of those line items in order to add the two together and understand the total cost. Under the new method, the actual cost of all of those individual services will be known, and you'll really only have to add the value of the excess cost grant to the...
Tuition.
...outplacement tuition line to get the total for outplacement tuition. It'll be much easier in the future.
And it actually wasn't until... All right, so, hold on a second.
Let me, and I said that correctly?
You said that correctly.
Okay, so then this, on page 17, the special education excess cost provision of 3.9, why would that then be listed as an income? As in, so we end with a total grand revenue of 9.1 million on page 18, which would include that excess cost. But in terms of total net income against our budget, it's actually, you know, that 9.1 less the 3.9, correct?
And the income section, we report all the funds that we receive. Doesn't necessarily mean that they're all additional, you know, funds that are spent separate from our general fund.
Okay, so, well, again, I guess I just don't see that as a... Okay, this is where I'm not looking for my accounting degree, so I'm perfectly willing to accept that. But so the key being, that everything else on here that is an income is a standalone income, and all of the numbers that they would correlate to, if it's a grant that's supporting technology, the technology line that's in the budget would always be the gross number?
No, not, so, parking fees for every, remember when we instituted parking fees?
Yes.
There to offset security?
Right.
Cost. So that's another example.
Of security as in as a net.
Right. Okay. If I need clarification on that, then I'll let you know that briefly. But that was something that kept coming up in the language of the answers to our questions, so I wanted to know about. My other question regarding income is back to the open choice. I definitely understand with the uncertainty of last spring, that for us to commit to taking what we had pledged to do in our racial imbalance plan, and then to have those students and the state turn around possibly and say, we're not giving you a penny for those, I understand that. But I don't understand with the racial imbalance plan that we have signed on, why we're not, and there appears to be evidence that the state is going to be supporting this, as they did this year, why then the number is not going up for next year in accordance with our own plan?
We actually held it flat this year as well, before we knew, and I don't know if you can answer the history to that, Ms. Moncel, why we haven't built in, which we didn't this year, and I don't think we did the year before, build in additional students that we might anticipate would come through open choice.
Well, we're never certain of the seats that we're going to have available, so we just held it with the number that we have.
Okay, so I guess that's something in a previous budget, but I didn't actually go back to verify that, look at that with.
It might be helpful for the administration. As you know, we have a longstanding policy to support open choice. And the last time we looked at this, about a year and a half ago, we found that as elementary enrollment went up, the amount of seats that we could make available either went down or kind of stayed flat. As enrollment went down, the amount of seats we could make available to CES went up, and over time, they ranged in the, I'll say, 60 to 80 range. 79, I think, was actually the highest we had at any one time. And so as enrollment was coming down, the district leadership said, okay, we probably can open up more seats. And then that lasted one year when the state budget process happened. I think we don't generally budget revenue, that we don't have a strong history of receiving. And so I think if this board wanted to say, look, that was a one-year blip, we should honor the policy that we have and ask the superintendent to offer us open choice seats based on the analysis of all 220 sections and where there will be open seats without creating a section, and I think if this board gave guidance to the superintendent, then we could offer more seats this spring, but we may not want to budget for that because of the reasons that Ms. Moncel just mentioned, that we can offer, but unless a student wants to actually come...
Of course.
We don't know whether we're going to fill the seat. So it might be helpful not to debate the exact number, but to say, is there general support to go in that direction?
Well, and just as my final comment on that, I accept the notion that, okay, so we don't budget for a higher number, just in case. We shouldn't count on revenue that's not in hand. But the separate issue of committing to taking more students always predicated on that this is not supposed to be increasing sections. That was always, you know, the baseline of our discussion on that. Speaking for myself, again, I already voted on that. So there are several of us here who did already vote to say, we expect this number to go up. I do like that the state hasn't gotten back to yet about the 900 additional open choice students that it would take to fix racial imbalance. I hope that was satisfactory to Dr. Rasmussen with his solving of that. But yet still, it was something that, for a few reasons, that this board supported. So I still would be interested in increasing that number, paired with what we're trying to do with Stratfield, to see if we get some movement on that needle.
Are there other board members that want to make a comment on that particular question? Then we'll go back to your other questions, if you might have them. Mrs. Jacobson.
Just that I feel the same way as Gemma Maxon Cunnelli, in that I would support the board if the seats were, you know, the decision to increase those numbers if the seats were available, without increasing the sections as we committed to do.
Okay, thank you. Other board members wish to make a comment? Mrs. Vitale?
Just to, I concur with my two fellow board members. I did not vote on the racial imbalance plan, but I think that we made a commitment as a board, and we need to try to do our best to abide by the plan that we have in place now. Obviously, I would not want it to add another section, so over the next few months, if you could just, as we get more numbers in, just know what schools might be available to have seats, and how many.
Other board members wish to make a comment? Mrs. Gerber?
Just, I agree with the other board members who've already spoken. You know, there is a racial imbalance plan in place that was voted on by the board, and so until that plan is rescinded or changed, we do need to, you know, respect that, and I think that it's important to try to, within the parameters of, again, not increasing a section, to do that. My concern is just eventually, whenever, you know, Dr. Jones and Chairman Dwyer need to go to Hartford to talk to the State Board of Education, I would just be concerned if they see the numbers and see that they've not even, they haven't gone up, they've gone down, that that could be problematic in terms of whether or not they continue to accept the plan that we presented to them that they approved.
Other comments from board members? Seeing none, I'll... Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli?
Just on income, I had one last question, so...
No, no, let me finalize my comment on open choice. So I'll talk with the superintendent after this meeting to kind of implement the sense of the board, and I didn't say what, but board members who have served on this board know that I have always supported healthy participation in the open choice program, so let me at least go on record of saying that. And then we'll follow up on this conversation. So back to Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli.
And then my last question is regarding on page 18, the special education revenue from other districts. And so, again, just to clarify, I believe that's what I read in someone, in the answer to someone's question, that that's reflective of the money we are now recouping, based on charging the other districts. Any possibility that that's going to go up more with any advertisement, if it is a sped number, or sped number is what made me think of it, but it could be a separate tuition line, is the Walter Fitzgerald campus, which, you know, that was one of the things we had been looking at with that campus, as having the potential to bring some revenue in, which I believe there was a comment at a previous board meeting that was not adequately advertised to other districts. Is that something that we are pursuing?
I wouldn't say we've actively pursued it. If the board wants us to do that, then we certainly will. If we took in any students from other surrounding communities that did have special education services, then it would increase that revenue line, because we would bill whatever district that was, for anything over, and this line in particular, is anything over 3,000 if we have an open choice student, because we do get $3,000, so it's over and above the 3,000.
Whereas if it was, say, from Easton, from Westport, whatever, it would be for the full amount.
That's correct.
And, once again, previous...
At Walter Fitzgerald?
That's correct.
Because we don't take students...
That's correct.
...through the open choice program, or the board's decision to allow Walter Fitzgerald to accept a few extra students, I think it was five.
And because, again, the idea had been that we're able to offer something, in this case, an alternative high school, that other neighboring smaller districts would find cost prohibitive to do, and so, again, this is something we'd already indicated a willingness to, I'll just speak for myself, that I would be, I mean, we were very concerned that it could be no one whose issues, and that was obviously befireded out through the IEP process, whose other issues could potentially really negatively impact our own students, our first priority is our own. But again, as a potential source of revenue, yes, I would be interested in continuing that.
And continuing the philosophy of not budgeting revenue, that we don't have a strong history of receiving, because this revenue is very much tied to individual students who are here in a given year, my guess is, in the future, you will always see the staff budgeting for next year what was projected this year, rather than saying, well, maybe we'll get more, and so we'll budget a little bit more. That would be a safer way of budgeting revenue on this line, and then allow its history to either push it up or push it down.
Yeah, and I will say, the numbers we use on that line are specific, because we know the billable costs for children.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions on revenue, pages 13 through 23? Mr. Peterson?
I have a brief question. Sorry, I'll get used to that. I did have a brief question, kind of dovetailing into what Ms. Maxon Cunnelli said about the accounting method, just to make sure that I'm clear. I understand what you're talking about in terms of net income, but if we list in this document an offset, in this case, the two math-science teachers, can we only spend that money, that $195,000, on those two teachers? Is it committing us to doing that? Or is this more of just a, I guess that's my full question, are we committed to doing that?
Yes, because that's how we budget the salaries for those teachers.
Okay.
If the teachers change between when we adopted the budget and next August...
Yep.
And we find a teacher costs us slightly less, I suspect that we're able to then reallocate the use of that grant, whatever minor amount is left, to some other cost.
We maneuver them around so that the numbers work...
Yes.
...with the point, in this case, with the .2 FTE.
We don't give the grant money back.
Can you give some color unto what maneuvering means in that context?
Right now, we're charging .2 of an MST teacher at every elementary school except Hollen Hill. If the number were to change, you know, we try to put another teacher from that school in there, if that's possible, or maybe move the Hollen Hill teacher in there and, you know, do something, see what I'm saying?
Actually, no. I mean, I guess, I guess my fundamental question is, wouldn't it be more flexible to have money in a larger pot that is not specifically offset by specific line items, but instead kind of as a, an overall... I guess I'm asking you to change your whole accounting system, which I know you have, you shouldn't have to do. I just, I'm having difficulty understanding how, if we budget for .2 FTEs math-science teacher, and for whatever reason, we don't need that, are we leaving the $195,000?
No.
Grant accounting is such that as long as you spend it for the purpose the grant was given, then you spend the whole grant, and so they...
But it's clearly possible that that wouldn't be the case.
And so therefore, if there's a little less salaries for that line item, then they'll spend it in some other eligible cost, or shift it to a salary that will get us to the full 195.
Thank you. I don't mean to be a stickler, I just, it's a newbie sort of question, so thank you very much.
But we don't give grant money back. We find a way through accounting to spend every dollar we get for the benefit of students. Other questions on the revenue side? Mrs. Jacobson.
Just on the building rentals revenue going down a little bit, I just wanted to know if it is usual at this point in time for organizations to have not booked reservations, or is that uncommon? Meaning, can we anticipate that possibly they may make the reservations, and that number could go up? I just see that this is a line item that we could potentially be earning greater income on, and was just curious about the process, and if that's customary or not customary.
Tom Cullen, Executive Director of Operations. Most of the reservations are in by this time. We do have some stragglers that come in and go, or new organizations, but generally by now, the ones that want to book, book early because they want to get the space.
Can you send me, just when you have time, no rush, just the process for booking those reservations? I'm just curious about how that works. Is it, do they just go online? Can anyone just go online and book space, or what is that process?
They can, but it has to be approved by a staff member in my office, who checks insurance if they're in town, if the groups associated with all Fairfield students or children in Fairfield, there's a list of things that we follow.
Okay, and if there is space available, but yet an organization would like to book facilities outside of those parameters, is there a mechanism by which those parameters may be expanded so that we can utilize the facilities to a greater capacity?
There is, but their cost goes up for anybody that's...
There is, though.
...an outside organization.
Okay, all right, thank you. I just wanted to know where we were at.
And the board does have a policy on rental to outside groups, which go into a reasonable amount of detail to give guidance to the staff. You may want to read through that policy to kind of get an understanding, and then talk to a PTA person and say, what is it like trying to schedule a room in the district?
Right, that's right.
Yes. Thank you.
I would like it to be easy to use it, right? Easier.
Other questions on the revenue side? Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli?
Just one last question, only because I brought this up to the ad hoc committee, and so obviously, that's where it still rests, because I don't imagine this is something that we could look into in the fall, and that was that whole notion of corporate sponsorship, and what would that entail? How do we get the ball rolling on that? Obviously, that's not for this budget cycle, but that I would be interested this spring that we begin the process of looking into that, because I really don't know what it involves, I just assume it takes longer and is more complicated than we imagine.
And would definitely start in a certain committee.
No.
But if we're going to do that, one would think the board would have to have a policy that guides the staff as to what to do, so, you know. Any other questions on revenue? Mrs. Vitale?
Really, just a question. At the RTM meeting last night, there were a number of departments that were awarded grants. I just wondered about the policy, or how aggressive staff is for looking for outside grants to fund some of our programs.
I think we're always looking for grants. One of the aspects that makes it a challenge for Fairfield is that a lot of the educational grants are tied to your free and reduced ratio, and ours hovers around 8 percent, and generally, a lot of them want you at least at 40 or 50 percent of your population. But they're always looking for grants.
Thank you.
Any other questions on revenue? Seeing none, we'll move on to item B, which is page 29, and pages 128 to 131, staff salaries. So why don't we start on page 29, if there's any general questions on those numbers, and then we'll go to the other pages that might have more detail, that you might have flagged a question on. Any questions on page 29, as a result of your... And some of these questions have been asked and answered through a written document that will be posted to the website tomorrow morning, and I do thank the board members who this year submitted far many more questions in advance, which is very helpful to the staff, and I especially thank the staff for their very hard work over a 24, 48, 72-hour period to get the answers. So for the public, if you don't see all these questions being asked, it's because some of them have been submitted in advance, and they'll be posted tomorrow morning. With that monologue, questions on the staff salary side? Seeing none, we will move on to item C, the benefits section, page 31. As you know, we reviewed some of this at our December meeting, but these are the current numbers, so any questions on page 31? Did you raise your hand, or you said, wait a minute? Okay, so, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli?
So, and this was one of the questions I submitted, and so now, clarifying that I'm understanding this correctly, that, because I had commented on the social security increase...
Go ahead, I'm on the wrong page.
So in the document that in our Friday packet, the question I asked, it's on page 11, it was question eight, where I asked that I didn't understand the social security increase, which had gone up six...
Can you pause just for a moment, so the superintendent can get to that page? Thank you.
Okay. So I'd commented on the increase of 68,000 and 56,000 in previous years, but this one being 157, and the answer I'd received was, this year, we are not utilizing excess cost or IDA grant funding in this category, meaning it's got, was completely reallocated to a different line, but in the past, that's why this number, because this was always a net, and I just never noticed it.
That's correct.
Okay.
So you do have an accounting degree.
I'm getting there, I'm getting there.
Looks like it's covered in here.
Okay. Asked and answered, right? Yep. Any other questions on the benefits section?
Just one other. Obviously, you had to make these estimates and everything based on recommendations, et cetera, of AON and whatever. When do those numbers get updated? And it has historically always been the case that if something, if we had a better experience, we didn't get to benefit... we didn't get to benefit from it. If we had a worse experience, we paid the price for it in our budget. But what is the timing on that, that we would expect that the first selectman, selectman's office, that the Board of Finance would know? What's the timing on that?
And you might want to clarify AON's role now versus what it historically had been?
What you're referring to is the projection updates that AON used to do when we were self-insured. So every, every month, or however often they did it, when claims were updated, they updated their projection. Since we've been on the Connecticut Partnership Plan, it's premium-based, so we pay the same premium no matter what happens with our experience. So to answer your question, we won't know what the actual rates are until April, when we get them from the state. And whatever they are, they will be, you know, effective as of July 1 through the, through the year. Our experience will not have an impact on the rates.
So the April information, if it's somehow more favorable, would then be only something that the RTM could take action based on whatever that information is?
If, yeah, timing.
You have budgeted what percentage increase in the premiums that you're estimating will happen in April?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven percent. So if it's zero, there's going to be a number. If you get down to six and three quarters, that quarter point spread over the number of employees that will or will not be on insurance next year may not be enough to warrant a change for the RTM. But, correct?
Thank you.
So Partnership 2.0, because it's premium-based, is more stability. It saved us money, but it's more stability. But that means also that in those years where suddenly our experience was very good, and we had, quote, "savings that we could count on," that was nice. Of course, the years where it was not very favorable, and we had to suddenly budget new money. So insurance used to be a lot more volatile than it will be last year, this year, and future years. Other questions on benefits? Seeing none?
Insurance, do you want to talk about that?
We'll loop back.
Come back.
Item D, operation and maintenance of buildings, page 43. And as you know, this is also the pages related to this on the detail side. And if there's, there's a lot of good information in the supplemental information section. And if there are questions related to operations and maintenance that you see in the supplemental information, feel free to ask as well. Mrs. Jacobson?
So I will be referring to the supplemental information on page 15 for my questions, and I would take...
Page 15?
Page 15.
Of the memo?
Of the questions, Q and A for tonight.
Page 15 of the memo.
Yes, page 15 of the memo. And page 77, starting on page 77 in the budget book. Letting everyone get there. So my first question...
Page 15 of the current memo?
Yes, page 15 of the current memo.
Those of you that have the one that has red in it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because we added so much more.
Oh, okay, I'm really sorry.
More pages, so.
I'm using my printed-out-from-home copy. All right, let me tell you, what page is it actually?
To clarify, you received page, that memo on Friday.
Seventeen, seventeen.
But it was supplemented with additional questions sent in, which has expanded and changed the page numbers. So it's at your table right now, with the red section being information that is new since Friday, and it would be helpful if you used that page reference, because that's where the staff are in terms of their thinking.
My notes are just on my own copy, so, sorry about that. Page 17, and then 77 in the budget book. So my first question is, on the 2017, 2018 maintenance projects, in the areas of those projects that were appropriated for this year but have been frozen, what is happening to those projects?
We made a decision with the superintendent's input on what was critical that we could get done for the school year that couldn't wait. So there were some minor repairs made, such as the ECC playground. We couldn't fund, at the time, the whole replacement of that playground, but we knew it needed some repairs to make it through another year. So we did repairs to that playground. We did a couple, two asbestos abatement projects. One for the Mill Hill gym office for the teacher, and one for the Holland Hill faculty room. Those were done. The rest of the projects are held in reserve until we are clear that the budget is safe, and the money that is held in reserve to cover any unexpected things that are happening with the state are clear.
And our goal is to get them done.
Right. And my question, though, is, if they don't get done, for some reason, do they move to the list of not-done maintenance projects? Do they happen next year? Do we just, I just want to know, if it doesn't get done, what's going to hap, they just fall onto the list?
No, I think our goal would be, we would look at the 1819 proposed that gets approved. Hopefully, they all get approved and decide what's most critical for all of the students, and work with the superintendent to decide which ones have to get done.
So they may bump what's in the 2018, they could bump that?
It's possible.
The board members, I hope you caught that, that every time we make a change in a capital project, it has the potential of bumping another project forward. And so the ones that are in the budget for 1819, if we're not able to complete these, and they're deemed to be vital, this will be bumped to 1819, and some project that's in the budget for 1819 will get bumped another year. Mrs., are you finished, Mrs.?
No, I'm not.
I think Mrs. Gervais wanted to ask for a follow-up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure, sure, sure.
I just wanted to follow up on one thing. Well, just looking at these numbers here, so the 1819 proposed maintenance projects total under $400,000, correct?
Correct.
And the reserved amount we have for 1718 is over $400,000.
Correct.
So let's just say, for the sake of argument, that none of these 1718 are able to be done. That's more than what we would, assuming this gets budgeted in full for 1819.
To do all projects, yes.
So we would basically have to bump everything from 1819, potentially?
Yeah, we would look at things like large accounts that are used for paving, painting, snow removal, if it turns out to be a mild winter. We would be looking at some of those that maybe could help it.
So they would supplement to add some more money to potentially be able to take care of some, but, you know, not wanting to be glass-half-empty about it, but, you know, if we don't get any of this funding for this year, we're already at a deficit, and so it would just, you know, and then we're just kind of bumping ourselves back and looking at this list that you included of all of the other projects that didn't make the final cut. It's a little, you know, I mean, and I realize a district of our size, we're always going to have lots of maintenance projects. But it just concerns me when we are, you know, kind of heading towards a place where we could be potentially bumping an entire year's worth of maintenance projects, give or take. You know, that's just...
Yes, we do our best with the money that's given us.
No, and I, I do understand that.
We keep a living document. That's why I was glad it was asked, and we were able to share it. You know, we always are listening to principals, staff, problems that are happening in the schools, and we keep a priority list. We try and get all the number ones in that we can.
Right, and then, of course, there are going to be other things that are going to pop up that you're not going to necessarily, you know, or something that could be a three that ends up becoming a one very quickly.
Yeah, they do move around.
Right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Jacobson?
Would you just, generally speaking, say that our maintenance list basically balances out each year with the same number coming off as the same number going on? Would you say it's growing, or would you say that it's shrinking?
I do know, one of the things I'd like to tell this board is, we do try and be fair and look at all schools, so it's not overweighted, and, you know, the high schools are getting most of the grunt of the work and the things done each year. We do work with the principals on the list. But generally, it's been, it's been getting approved and acceptable for what we're getting done in the schools. We do see the improvements. The other good thing is, all of the preventive and maintenance programs are approved each year. Those are a huge help. We're getting very good response back from the contractors and consultants working with us on all of those. And those are also keeping the schools in good shape.
Well, good, thank you. I'm glad that we're balancing it out between all of our schools in an equitable manner. I just wanted to know, is this list getting larger?
No, things do come off of it. So I would say, in my 15 years here, the list is about the same as it's been.
The same?
Yeah. They're running about a million each priority.
Okay, can you just, one last question for me? And I am now on page 79.
Page 79?
Yeah, the budget book. What is code and life safety that we appropriated this year, $100,000 to? $75,000 of that was frozen. And I know that, you know, it's proposed $100,000 for next year, but I just wanted to know what that is.
Code and life safety covers building code upgrades, fire code upgrades, life safety issues at all of the schools. So things that come up could be anything from door hardware, door replacements, ramps, anything that's helping staff and students get in and out of the school building safely.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
And could you clarify, that's a term that you use on this line, but if there is a code violation or a safety violation, those projects get priority, and if it takes one or two or three or four years to replace door handles, but they still function, they will still also be on that line?
They definitely take priority.
Other questions from board members? Mr. Peterson?
Sorry, I keep forgetting to do this. Hoping to move on to ask some questions about electricity usage. So beginning in the detailed documents on page 74. In the, in the summary section, you talk about costs increasing on a kilowatt-hour basis as approximately 9% higher year to year. But one of the things that jumped out at me when I was looking at this is some very large, much higher than 9% increases, and looking particularly at Dwight, and no disrespect to Dwight. The allocation this year is up 34% year-over-year. And a lot of the elementary schools are like that. And I guess my, my fundamental question, and I submitted this, and I appreciate the administration trying to answer it, but these are buildings that are, I don't understand why these costs aren't more in line with the kilowatt-hour increase, because I don't know what, are they using 34% more electricity at Dwight, and if so?
It's a lot of factors. I mean, it's a good question. I know you're having difficulty with it, but there's a lot of factors that go into play with the utility costs. You know, one is certainly the electricity increase is a large percentage. 9% is a lot across the district in our schools. Heating costs are going up 3%. You also have to take into account, any, we have to project any additional square footage being added to the district, to the schools, which there's a lot coming up. Riverfield is going to see its first full year of added square footage. Ludlow High School will.
Yeah, but Riverfield is, is actually down year-to-year in terms of electricity usage. So, I mean, I guess, it seems like a very noisy bunch of data points. An interesting thing that I saw in here, someone else asked about solar savings. And I noticed that Riverfield, for example, in the first year, so I imagine this is the 2016, 2017 year, Dwight saved $17,000 on its electricity costs, but at that school, electricity costs have gone up a lot since then.
The chart we shared with you, first, I'd like to go back and continue what I was saying about the other things. Then I'll get into the solar for you. But we look at the additional square footage being added. We have to look at equipment being added to the schools. There's been a lot of air conditioning split units added, eight across the district, a couple of larger units. So we have to look at all of that. That was one thing I wanted to tell you. The second thing is that when we projected last year's for 1718, we were off the mark with some of the schools. We were anticipating added square footage, we were anticipating some solar systems going live on a certain date that didn't go live, so we were off the mark with some of those schools. And the same thing with the list I shared with you. The list you saw on page 13 of our answers is what the contractors projected our savings would be. Now that we've got some 12-months records on some of these schools, they're slightly lower. It's based on how many panels they installed versus what they projected. You can also see, I answered one of your questions about Ludlow High School and Ward. They were supposed to go live in July. Ward, Ludlow didn't go live till November, and Ward still isn't going live till February 15, we're hoping. So we don't have real good numbers yet on what we're going to see from those solar systems. I can tell you that we are projecting about $130,000 to $150,000 in savings from all the solar systems next year, not the 198, because some of these aren't live and they're not ready.
All right, I mean, I guess, you know, it is what it is, and it's just a surprising array of numbers. I did notice, just as a kind of casual relationship, that it seems like some of the buildings that had been renovated more recently have higher electricity bills, which I imagine is mostly air conditioning.
It is. Also, the grid rate that the UI charges us per school is different for every school. You would think it's the same across the town of Fairfield. It's not. It's based on its location.
Okay, that's good to know.
So that rate is hurting us at some schools, where you would think we'd be seeing things better. Also, the solar system grid rate that was approved and negotiated with UI through the contractors is different at every school. So you can imagine how difficult it is when we're looking at each school, what rate we're being charged, what the increase is, and then what the solar might help us with.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, and I, again, I don't want to cause any, I don't want the kids at Dwight to be in the dark either. I just, just some, just some...
Wouldn't allow that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Asa, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, with regards to the solar, I had posed a question on that, and it appears to be answered. But I wanted to go a little bit into what you're talking about with systems not going live. And I have a question in, I know we, we sign contracts, and we have leases and things in place. Do we have any recourse against that, or are these things not going live our end problems? Or is it the contractor's issue? And if it is, can we get some retroactive savings because they didn't perform as promised?
Good questions. First one is, the contract, even though it's written and signed, and they have a projected live date, the date it actually goes live is when the 20-year starts. So there's really no need to go after the contractor and say, you missed by three months. You know, what's our recourse? The minute the system goes live, UI confirms it's live, they mark that in a warranty date, and they get us a sheet of paper on it for our records. It goes live from that date 20 years forward. Secondly, the, what were some of your other questions here on that, please?
I think you pretty much answered it, but, but a piggyback on that, with some of the issues with, like, the schools not going live, I believe I had heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, whether it be, I think at Ludlow, there was an issue where they couldn't go live, or it was Ward.
Ludlow, they were delayed, three months, and just in getting things finished to go live. Ward isn't going live because of a power issue we were having there.
That's what I, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
So is that continuing to ongoing, and what is that, is that costing us a lot of?
It costs us some money in investigation work and hiring a professional engineer. It really had nothing to do with the solar photovoltaic carport project. It had more to do with the solar roof project. When the solar roof project went live in July, we started having the power issue in August, a month later. So we assumed it was because of the work they might have done in our electrical panel and their new breaker. So we hired a professional engineer, and it was happening two, three times a month. We were tripping an 800-amp breaker for Fitz's house, and sometimes we were tripping the main, 2,500-amp main. What we found through the engineer study and the work we did, arc flash study and all kinds of commissioning of the electrical room, was that it wasn't actually the solar systems themselves. It's possible that it's something the contractors did, either on the roof or in our electrical room, but it's not actually the solar systems. We were able to rule that out. We just found that out with the second system over Christmas time. We went live with the solar carport for... over Christmas time. Uh, we went live with the solar carport for three days because the company, uh, had to prove before the end of the year that the system would work, for him to get his grant and per his contract. So, we allowed him during the shutdown, uh, to go live for three days, test that the system was working, he was pulling current, and then shut it back off. So, now we're working with him on a February 15th date to go live. The engineers did do, uh, something really good for us, and they identified a safe, uh, mechanism for both these rooftop solar and the solar, solar carport. Um, the solar carport contractor is willing to take on that work at no charge. It's about $10,000. The solar roof company is not at this time. Uh, and we are still working with him and a local contractor to try and do that. So, there'll be a safe gap measure for both systems that will help, uh, the building and the electrical room.
So, it's still ongoing?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Gerber?
Um, yeah, I just had a question, um, about the boiler, the Holland Hill, um, boiler repair. Um, I can't remember, and I can't believe, because boilers have been such a topic of conversation over the years. What's the average life of a boiler?
Depends on the type of boiler.
Okay.
Uh, generally, a, um, steam boiler or sectional boiler is 15 to 20 years. Uh, that one's running about 17, going 18 years.
Okay.
The larger boilers that we'd like just put in at Fairfield-Ludlow High School are more like 30 years.
Right. Okay. So, I guess that was my question. So, this is not a replacement, this is a repair?
Uh, no, this is a replacement.
Oh, it says repair steam boiler.
Repair and replace. Uh, what page are you looking at?
Um, page 160?
160. Yeah, it should be replace. It's a replacement.
It doesn't say replace anywhere, though. It just says repair project, repair, minor repair fixes.
Yeah, it's a replacement.
Oh, it is a replacement?
Yes.
Okay. I just wonder maybe if you should change it to replacement, just because the word replacement isn't in this entire...
Yeah, we could. We should do that.
...description, just because, you know, since it is a fairly high amount. And that was my question, because it says here, the anticipated service life of this repair, repair project would be 20 years. So, and if, if this is already 18 years old, I just thought it might be not so. But if it's a replacement, then, um, and I, and I guess, do you by any chance know what type it is? Because I see there are two different types at Holland Hill. There's a Smith and a...
And a Will McLean.
Will McLean? Will McLean is the kind?
Yeah. That's how you say it.
All right. Yeah. No, I was just wondering, because I was looking at the other...
Both are steam boilers.
Okay. Because I was looking at the other boilers from 2000, just to see, you know, I didn't know if maybe this was something that was an issue with that particular brand. But if it's the Will McLean, that seems to be the only one, um, from this era, whereas all the other 2001s are Smiths. So, I just...
We made repairs this year to both boilers. Uh, one needed a burner. Uh, the other one, when they took it apart, there was just way too many holes. And being that it's steam, it won't leak a lot of water on the floor like a hot water boiler will, so we'll get through the winter. But they highly recommend we replace it.
Okay. And then is there any sense, so then the other one is also 18 years old?
The other one's okay, though.
It's okay?
Yep. It's been approved by our preventive maintenance contractor through testing, has a new burner. We're good.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Asa?
Just a follow-up to that. I'm taking it that this is a given, but replacing a boiler at Holland Hill in the midst of a major renovation and addition, um, that's all been, I'm assuming, taken into consideration, and the boiler that's being put in is sufficient for whatever's going on with the project?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
It's being sized with the new addition in mind.
Yes.
Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli?
Thank you. Um, first, I just wanted to explain to you, Mr. Cullen, my question about the fence. And so, I would like getting your answer. I didn't so much need the picture. I liked the ver- that you included the fact that my, so my question had been, if can we see a picture of what was going in at Sherman? Um, just being concerned honestly about it being ugly. Um, that's the comment I wrote in my budget book. So, I was glad to hear that you had, that community input had been received, and so that this is something that was agreed on, and we're not just going for cheap, that it's going to be aesthetically in keeping, uh, with a nice school setting. Um, and based on your description, it certainly sounded like that. So, I just want to say that I'm fine without the photo. Thank you for the description. Um, but a few other questions. Um, I do, uh, would like to go back to Mr. Peterson's point, is that i- is there some, I mean, obviously, we haven't looked to hire someone like a Johnson Controls that could come in and do a, you know, an efficiency study of our use of the buildings or what have you. Um, but does there ever reach a point where, I don't know if it would be your office or whatever, that would speak to a principal and say, "Your numbers are up. People aren't," I mean, to be simplistic, "people aren't turning their lights off. You are leaving the air on when you shouldn't be." You know, something like that, because I'm sure some of the, the increase, it's bound to be, is bound to be some waste. Um, but I was wondering, is there a point where, with all of the different UI rates, um, with all of the different aspects of the buildings, that it would be brought to your attention, and there would be some communication from central office to a school?
It is. There's a lot of things we're doing. Um, the contractor that was awarded the control integration PM contract actually dials into the schools, uh, with computer to monitor what's going on with the set points and temperature levels. Um, so we're monitoring that on a regular basis to try and see what's, what's going on. Uh, as far as, um, the lighting controls, we, we started about five or six years ago, requiring that we put occupancy controls in a lot of the school classrooms. But, uh, to be honest, a lot of the staff don't like them, because if you're sitting quietly in the room, they go off automatically.
Yep.
So, what we found is they were putting little pieces of paper over the dome up in the ceiling, so that it wouldn't do that. Um, but...
Never thought of that.
The director down in Greenwich and in Stratford is not going to appreciate...
I'm just waving my arms around.
Uh, the architects have been smart. Uh, they look at the indoor light coming in, and they can adjust the ballast in the lights, so the lights closest to the windows, uh, don't turn on as much as the ones further in by the corridor. We've done all kinds of things in additions and renovations. But generally, we're not seeing a lot of wasted uh, energy and electricity usage. You know, it's not grossly overrated. Um, but...
I was more wondering if there was a mechanism in place that if something did start to get out of whack with precedent with what would be considered appropriate, there is a mechanism in place for you to be alerted to that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Ms. Pitco?
Are you still in the middle of questions?
I, I have a few more, but that's fine.
Ms. Pitco?
I know for your home, you can do like a home energy audit, and they come in and they do like a blower test to see where the air is escaping, or maybe, um, the lighting's not appropriate. Is there something like that for buildings?
Yeah, there is for schools. I mean, we're doing building envelope repairs, um, a lot of suction repairs. We're doing smoke tests for ventilation cracks in pipes. Um, so, uh, occupancy mode when the boilers are on. Um, you know, if we know that it's a normal weekend, uh, unoccupied mode, they'll shift downward all on their own. Um, dampers that are open and closed for boiler rooms during cold weather. Uh, there's a lot of little things we are doing, but, uh, our buildings get a lot of use. Uh, it's unbelievable how many reservations there are, and the doors open and closed, uh, lights on and off. A custodian's cleaning. We've even tried to work with them that when they clean, they shut lights along the way, so one end of the building to the middle. Uh, it doesn't look like it's lit up like a Christmas tea, tree all night till 11:00. Um, so, we're doing everything we can.
Thanks. Well, one other thing we could do is, you know that answer that you give to your children? "I'm paying the light bill, so turn that light off." Maybe if we had the headmasters of our two high schools pay the light bill, they'd, uh, direct their children in the school differently. Mr. Peterson?
I, I just want to say, I'm, I'm sorry, in some ways, I, I opened this can of worms. I certainly didn't want to accuse anyone of, of waste or, or overuse.
I'd rather be sitting here helping you explain it than sitting in the back just listening.
No, no. And I, and I... I very much appreciate your help. Thank you.
I hope the rest of the staff feel that way if we start calling them all up. Right, Mr. Habbling? Right?
Right.
Yep. Um, I did have a few more questions.
Let me just make one coming. Uh, Mr. Cullen is proud of the work that his staff do. And frequently, as a board, we will tour the front of the house as we look at schools. We rarely tour the back of the house, i.e. the boiler rooms and the electric rooms and all that stuff.
Our boiler rooms are so clean.
And I am sure Mr. Cullen would be more than happy, actually, to, uh, to, uh, take people on a tour to say, "Here are the kinds that, kinds of things that we're doing for preventive maintenance, for energy savings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." Because the back of the house is, and the envelope is actually equally important to the front of the house. Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli?
Okay, thank you. Um, let me just find my other questions. Um, all right, I lost it on that page. Um, back to the, uh, solar, I just wanted to correct the number that's in here, then. Oh, and I apologize, you said it quickly and I missed it. This, um, this is, oh, this is the old memo. Um, it was on page 12 of the old one, uh, page 13 of the new draft. Um, so that solar number of 198,000 is no longer correct?
It's not correct because it's projected by the contractor, not actual. It's also not correct because the two solar carports aren't live in this, uh, to see that total number being added. Uh, but the projections we're doing, and I can share something with the board, um, maybe in a, in a few days, three or four days, I can get you an updated sheet, but...
I mean, because this does say that Ward is not live, and that Ludlow did not go live till November 1st. So, those numbers next to that were what had been projected? That's not...
Correct. You're right. So, they were projected to be live. We would see a new full year in 1819 for all of those, and now that might not happen. A couple of those. Plus, we're getting real numbers now on the other solar systems that we have 12 months on. And they're a little bit lower. They're close, like Ward's is 69,604, I think. And it says 73 there. So, we have actuals.
Right.
And it's, it's based on, you know, when the contractor got up on the roof and started installing them, you know, he's probably had 10 or 15 less panels he could put in than he expected, uh, because of his raceways and things. But the numbers are close. The good news is there is a savings. It's gonna be about 130 to 150,000 dollars for 1819 from the solar.
Right, which I think is wonderful. So, I mean, obviously, we were excited to do that last year. Um, and then my other question, uh, just checking my, uh, page 18 and 19 of the new document, there were just two quick questions. Um, one was about, in the priority two list for Fairfield-Ludlow, that new renovation of the concession building, which obviously is not something we're doing, but as something, is something like that the sort of thing we ever consider outsourcing? So that they can have a, you know, I, I'm not sure what's, I know I've walked past the concession stand, but...
You don't mean outsourcing the construction work? You mean outsourcing the funding of it?
The, the operation, if, if that's something that would, could become an...
You mean the operations?
That's correct.
No, it has nothing to do with the concession stand. It's just the fact that the concession stand building has a very large second floor storage area. And the athletic director and the principal of that school wanted to know if we could renovate that second floor for a locker room for the football team.
Okay. Um, and then my only other question, because this was in the back of my, priority three for Roger Ludlow, and some people, this is gonna test your memory, that installing new siding over existing wood cedar. I, I don't know if you were hoping I wasn't gonna see that, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but after that building was completed, shortly, I'm gonna say, use the word shortly, that being a judgment call, shortly thereafter, this brand-new building needed siding help, and now it's on here again. Is my memory correct about that?
So, Mr. Peterson opened one can of worms. You wish to open...
Yeah. It was actually rejected. What, what happened was the, the architect specifications on the design of the cedar for that building, uh, said that it would need a new coat of polyurethane staining every two years. And it didn't get done. Uh, the numbers we started to get were astronomical to go in and, uh, restain that stain. And it got to a point where it was seven, eight years later, we were seeing it starting to rot in some corners, really discolor. So, we thought maybe a better thing to do would be to cover over with a siding-type product that wouldn't need to be polyurethaned every two years and have high maintenance. We presented that to the town bodies, and it was rejected. Uh, we were told that cedar siding is similar to Cape Cod cottages, and that siding should weather and look gray and be the same as Roger Lulow Middle School. So, we took it off the books. Uh, we continue to monitor it with our building envelope program, preventive maintenance. Um, and what we're recommending is to go over it with a cedar-like type cementitious board product, uh, that maybe could cover it and have less maintenance.
And why had this been picked in the first place?
Why the siding was picked?
Yes.
Uh, architectural design, Perkins and Eastman.
But it was, it was a selection of the building committee picking this over something more durable or... Okay. Just wanted to see if my memory was correct on that, correct on that. Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions on, on, uh, operation and maintenance of buildings? Ms., uh, Mrs. Vitale?
Can you speak to the painting schedule of the buildings? I see there's a decrease in painting for next year. Um, are we on schedule? I'm guessing not. Um, what schools are maybe, were supposed to be done this year, next year?
Uh, be truthful, we can always paint the inside of classrooms and school buildings. So, it's, it's a constant request, uh, from probably all the principals, if we could do a little painting. So, we were on a schedule of, uh, trying to do like a wing at each school and trying to do six or seven schools a year. Uh, we're a little behind with that schedule right now. So, um, it's one of the counts that's easy to steal from when we have emergencies or other things that really come up. Uh, we look at paving and painting, but painting is a, is a popular item. We get a lot of requests. Um, we certainly take care of the really bad areas. We want to start working on a lot of outside soffits. Um, if any of you've been to Ward, you'll notice the soffits outside that are white when you look up are really peeling. So, we're trying to do some of the outside areas. But, uh, it's a good question. So, it's probably the biggest topic asked for, uh, from the principals is painting. Because once you paint a whole corridor and a bunch of classrooms, they look brand-new. They smell fresh. They look great. So, it's something to do on the inside.
Anything further, Mrs. Vitale?
Like, I want to ask what schools aren't gonna be looking as fresh next year, I guess. And this is done by your staff, or is it done by the custodians in the building, the painting?
No, it's an outside company. It's a lowest qualified bidder. We have a couple of good contractors that can come in and do really great job and low prices.
So, you'll have a contractor come in and do a bunch of schools at a time? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Jacobson?
Follow up, just a follow-up to that question. Um, I'm back on page 79 in the budget book. So, for this year, we had $150,000 appropriated for painting, if I am right. And a hundred thousand of that was frozen. Can you recollect at all where that $150,000 was going to go? I mean, if you don't, it's okay. I'm just curious.
Trying to think if I have my painting schedule in my book behind me. I don't think I do, but I do have a painting schedule...
You do?
...that we follow. It's probably eight or nine schools on it that are next.
And we're estimating a third of that to get done this year?
Yeah, the 50,000 won't go that far. Uh, to do a corridor in 10, 12 classrooms is roughly in the 8,000 range, just to give you an idea. Eight to $10,000 range.
Five, five areas.
So, you might get five, five areas.
Out of the 15 that were roughly scheduled.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And those corridors are double-loaded, so therefore, a corridor with classrooms on either side is roughly 8,000.
Right. And it would depend if it's two-tone and the principal wants two colors.
Uh, any, did you have other questions that you, feel, feel free?
A little Grey Owl?
Or don't?
No, I'm just...
Okay. Any other questions on, uh, operation and maintenance of buildings?
No, it's not.
Okay. On to transportation, item E, page 37.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to make a statement about the contract?
Yeah. Um, for transportation, we will do our best to answer questions, but we are limited, just so that you'll understand, because we do not have, um, the bid awarded for a new contract yet. So, um, this number could change slightly. We don't expect it to go up. Um, and we were hoping that that would have been awarded before tonight, so we could talk more about the contract. more about the contract. But I will say the number that's in here is less than what we were anticipating when we went out to bid. So that's, that's a good thing, because there are other localities in Connecticut that are seeing a much greater increase in their bus contracts. Ms. Mansell, you'll have to remind me exactly which percentage we built in for this particular contract, but...
I want to say three.
Three, yeah. And we, we were expecting originally two to five, but I think overall it was three. Okay.
Other questions on transportation, Mr. Asa?
Okay, so I submitted a question here, and I apologize if I'm beating a dead horse or not understanding it, maybe piggybacking on Ms. Maxon Cannelly here. But you just mentioned two to 3% increase. That, I keep going back and getting confused, because I believe a couple of meetings ago we talked about the potential increase in transportation expense and the bids, and the bids being higher because of bus company, employee costs, benefits, retirement, all those other things that go into it. And your answer to my question here is talking, going back to this excess cost and everything. So I guess I'm curious, am I missing something? Is it, is it all related to this excess cost being in here now, or is what we discussed previously still the driving force on the increase in the bid?
In the bid.
I don't remember why we were having that discussion, but I...
I don't either.
I do remember, it had something to do with the anticipated increases in transportation when we went out to bid. And what I was talking about was that the, we hired a consultant to help us write the bid, the specs. And both he and the purchasing director were under the impression, you know, they had a belief that it could be, we could see increases as high as 20%, double-digit increase. So that was their fear, that's not necessarily what happened.
Okay, so, so this increase in cost is a combination of a higher bid that was coming regardless, plus the calculation with this excess cost being applied now?
Excess cost has to do with the special, a piece of the special ed. But the pricing on the contract was not as high as what the purchasing director and the consultant figured it could be.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mrs. Gerber?
Um...
Followed by Mrs. Vitale and... Okay, I've got four people, so I'll start with Mrs. Gerber.
Just a really quick question, do we have any idea when we'll know definitively? Because I know it's kind of in limbo for a long time, and I'm sure you're frustrated as well. I just, do we think it'll be by the, I guess my question is, I mean, obviously it'd be great if it happened by Thursday, I'm assuming that's not going to happen, but would it happen, let's say, by the time the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance are reviewing the budget, or when the Board of, or when the first selectman gets the budget? Just, I'm just thinking, just in case if there are any changes in the number, since we don't have a, you know, a contract.
I honestly can't say when to expect a decision.
Okay.
I mean, I would have thought that it would have been a long time ago. That's not the case, and...
Right, because I know, because I, you know, it was like November, so, yeah. And again, I'm, I'm sure you're, want to get it done as well. So I was just curious, because I know I've been asked, and I just didn't know how it would fit in with the rest of the whole budget cycle.
Nobody wants a decision more than I do.
I would imagine, so I'll keep my fingers crossed.
For the Board to clearly understand, while it's in our budget and we pay the bill, it's the town purchasing department that manages the contract bidding and awarding of the contract, not the school district staff. Let's see, Mrs. Vitale, you asked, you had a question on transportation?
Yeah, I have a quick one, just about the magnet transportation. Is the increase on that line item having to do with special, or...
Yeah, we don't necessarily have cost in the right line item.
Okay.
Okay, so that's not right.
Okay.
Mrs. Jacobson?
Yes, I'm looking at pages 80 and 81 for the district-wide extracurricular transportation, and going from 2016 to the proposed for next year. It's almost about $13,000 reduction across the districts, when I'm looking at the longevity of it all. And I just wanted to know, is that because there's a decreased need for that transportation, or are we reducing the service?
That's part of what the principals budget with their allocation, so it's up to them as to...
So that is part of, okay, and can someone...
Can I, if I can just add, we did address that when we were meeting with the athletic directors. And they actually, it depends, some years they're higher than other years, depending on how many of their teams are actually going to playoffs, because it extends your season. And so this number was adjusted at that level.
Well, are you talking about extracurricular?
Yes.
The athletics is in a, in a different area?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess my basic question is, is this possess, you know, have an impact on students being able to do extracurricular activities, or is this just really a reduction because there just isn't a need for it? So it's part of the 20% is what you're saying?
Right.
It is? Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, did I see your hand go up?
Yes, so in terms of those, because obviously, I definitely get the, the state, you know, the state playoffs in terms of our high schools, but for our elementary schools that are making the determination to take that off, what kinds of trips or transportation is that not funding? Or is it simply they're saying that if they have something involving extracurricular transportation, it is all being put on to the students in order for them to have the trip?
I don't know that for sure, but my guess is it's a combination of PTA or another source of funding and the student, and/or the student. But principal would have to answer that.
Okay. And then I also wanted to, just to get back to Mr. Asa's question, Mrs. Vitale had submitted a question, which was on page 19 of the new draft of today's memo, with a question about student transportation. So just to be clear, that the increase in the transportation number itself is not only the contract, not only the fact that the excess cost money is being allocated somewhere else, I'm getting the accounting of that...
Yep.
But in fact, there are also 22 more students this year than last year that have been Isn't that what this answer is indicating?
Yes, I don't, did Mr. Mancusi provide that number?
We should get people to put their names in parentheses of who's authoring all of these answers.
And introduce yourself for the TV audience.
Good evening, Rob Mancusi, Executive Director, Special Education. That is correct, that's the discrepancy between the number on page 154 that we discussed last week of 102 outplacements and the year before.
And now I forget, and those are the pages of my book that are tattered a bit.
It was 154 in the current book, and I, I don't know the page in the previous book.
Do you know how many of those, 22, were due to unilateral placement versus PPT placement?
No, but I can get that to you by Thursday.
Okay. Because obviously, that would be something that we really hope could be addressed, because of course, whenever they're unilateral, that's also going to involve some hefty legal fees, not that I need to tell you that. And I forgot my other question, so, thank you.
Mrs. Vitale?
I just have to follow up on the magnet transportation. If it's, if it's not supposed to be on that line, is it still in transportation, just another line within the transportation?
Yes, it wasn't allocated properly.
Then 64.
It wasn't allocated properly, right.
Other questions on transportation? Mr. Asa?
Okay, going back to Mrs. Vitale's question here on page 19, answer, I don't know if it was just an oversight, but there was a, what I thought was a good question, has the district considered trying to partner with other school districts to share some of these transportation costs? Either both of the cost sharing, revenue, or any, anything in there? Could you just touch on that, or through the superintendent?
We do, we talk about that at our superintendent's organization as well, and we've even talked about it again this year. It's a really challenging thing to do, just because start times are different for different localities. You have the number of students who are going in, on, in and off, transportation on any given year changes. I know Mr. Mancusi's had this experience in his previous district, we just talked about this, if you want to add to that.
Hello, Rob Mancusi again, Director of Special Education. I actually chaired a consortium of, there was nine area districts in New Haven County where I used to work, and we got together and we tried to do exactly that. Match up the outplacements that we were sending our students to and see which towns in the area, you know, we could share transportation costs with. The first year, it was, it was productive, but it got difficult to manage, because every time that we changed placements or a kid got off, we were constantly, logistically, it became very difficult to do. But it, it was a very interesting exercise.
Even with the difficulty of logistics, were you seeing an actual significant savings?
Initially, we were, but over time, because, because other districts were experiencing the same logistical difficulties we were. And it was, it was, the committee kind of disbanded over time.
Thank you.
That conversation has started also with us at CES, with area business officials, you know, describing exactly what Mr. Mancusi was talking about, but it hasn't, the discussion was initiated, but it hasn't gone that far.
Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
I was trying to weave, Mr. Mancusi did not run away so quickly. After all, we are hearing about the staff wanting to come up and talk, so, just thought I'd point that. So as we look in the memo on page three and four, which I, when this says New Mexico, does that mean the state?
Yes.
But, you know, when I think of something like heading down to Eagle Hill and Greenwich, you know, up to, now CES, I can, maybe there's a few more, so therefore, it's enough for us to do it by ourselves. But I just have to believe that if Westport, if Easton, if Bridgeport, if they're sending their students as well, that's...
Some of these are unilateral placements as well.
Okay. Well, if those get settled, then they're not in our favor. Again, it just, with such a tremendous list, so many of which are not in Fairfield and other districts, everyone's talking about this as a topic, and I don't doubt that it's a logistical nightmare, and that at some point, it wouldn't involve enough of a savings to be worth the headache. I understand that, but it just seems like a conversation worth happening here in Fairfield County, at least with our immediate neighbors. Easy for me to say, I recognize I'm not the one who would have to do it, but there's just a lot of schools here.
Yeah, and it would take, at a minimum, at least one full-time staff person and probably a cleric to go with them to coordinate, which we could all contribute, you know, in Fairfield County. Doesn't mean we couldn't make it happen, but it is complex.
Thank you.
Final questions on transportation? Final questions on transportation? Okay, on to the last subject, F Review Section Dues and Fees, page 47. You know that question that you ask and you hope nobody answers it? This is the end of our section of review, but if somebody has thought of a question on a prior topic that they set up, I wish I had asked that at the time we were talking about that. We are slightly ahead of schedule, with the exception of Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, who always has her list of questions. But no, if there is a question that, that people want to ask for some prior section, we are ahead of schedule, and so feel free to ask it. And I'll ask Mrs. Maxon Cannelly to lead us off.
Did you want to do the public comment now, Mr. Dwyer, or should I go ahead and launch?
I presume that you should go ahead and launch, because I presume you won't be talking for 35 minutes.
I would hope not. First, I'd want to get back to the, the whole transition from the effective school solutions, because, first of all, we had gotten numbers in two different...
If you could reference a page number, either on the memo or the...
Yes, that's what I'm trying to find. And this will involve the document from January 16th, so just keep it, hold on. Now I'm trying to find the number in this...
You're talking about the $605,000 number, I suppose.
Yes, right, because, and this is on the 116, everyone else, on the 116 document, page 10, there had been a reference to 605,000, and then the document we got for today, there was the reference to 535,000.
My name is Rob Mancusi, Director of Special Education. The difference, you're absolutely correct, and I expected that question. You'll note the two bullets on, below that cost, the continuation of high school DBT consultation, that currently takes place, and that's going to continue to take place. So that's where that $30,000, we're going to incorporate that into our new program. And then the $40,000 is, it's for extended-year programming, or summer programming, for students who have significant needs that need programming beyond the school year. That did not happen this year, so that's an additional cost. I compared the ESS costs to our proposals. I did not include those, because one already exists and one doesn't exist.
No, and that's, I would expect an apples-to-apples comparison. So it made me question the January 16th document, that something had to be in there that I didn't know about, so...
That's the $70,000 difference.
Thank you. But then, what I'm also wondering about, just in terms of our students, is that the questions I had written down were regarding, how is this transition going to be handled? How is the communication being handled? I'll do those two questions first, because I have spoken with at least one parent who has a child in the program right now. And as you can imagine, where the concerns of these students is not so much math, but it is the social-emotional component to their being in schools. And this is precisely the type of thing which I imagine to be their worst nightmare, which is unsettling transitions and changes to a staff member that they can't even meet yet. And so I was wondering if you could speak to, how is that transition being handled? What is the plan for now going forward?
The plan is, I've met, along with my team several times, with the staff from ESS to discuss the transition plan. We are finalizing, and we're near finalization of all details. Parents did receive a letter from me and an invitation to call with any concerns. We're going to be asking parents to come in. We're going to be sending parents a survey to talk about what they like about the current program, the strengths and weaknesses, what they would like to see additionally, or some suggestions for improvement. And then we're going to, we're going to meet with parents. We have a planning meeting to discuss precisely what the, the survey's going to look like that we're going to send to parents who are currently involved with ESS, and then we're going to set up a meeting with them.
And I assume that that survey will have significant points, parts for just open-box writing?
That's exactly right. It's going to be pretty much, I'm looking for open-ended responses. Strengths, weaknesses, areas of improvement, and, and any other thoughts that you would like to share with, with the district.
And that'll be communication with both the students and the parents?
Yes.
In terms of, because obviously, this is, I'm sure it's highly individualized, in terms of what their children are getting.
Parent anxiety, family anxiety, student anxiety around this, this issue is greatly appreciated and understood. And we need to do right by our families and our students to make this transition work and to go smoothly. I have had conversations with ESS on that, so those will be ongoing.
Okay. And then my third question, specific to ESS, when this had been rolled out, there had been conversation all along about the need to move this down to the middle schools. Because I have no doubt that some of the issues that we, that you're encountering, that we're all encountering in the high school, started in the middle school, and just like a whole SRBI process of trying to get things in elementary school, and perhaps getting students, you know, through the PPT process, off their IEPs, and independent, more quickly, the same could be true here, that if we were... the same could be true here, that if we were addressing things in the middle school far more carefully, far more closely, for which we are probably not quite staffed for at this point in time, it would very much alleviate things once they're in the high school level. And I was wondering what the conversations have been like with staff regarding that.
In this year's budget, we have built in, you know, last year was a big rollout year for DBT at the high schools. Next year, we have into the budget, we're going to do that same similar rollout for the middle schools, because you're absolutely right. Students' social-emotional competencies are an area of focus. We have to strengthen so we can avoid long-term, you know, social-emotional issues that they suffer, which could result in, you know, significant programming for special education.
Okay, thank you, because as I'm sure you're aware, that's one of the college's biggest requests of districts, you know, what do they want their incoming students, you know, how can us, how can we prepare them? They say, "Send us socially and emotionally healthy children."
Absolutely.
And so, you know, I'm very interested to hear about that rollout eventually down to the middle school, because I really think that's a key part of this.
We will keep you posted every step of the way.
Thank you. Because, and actually, to that point, is that in terms of keeping us posted and doing this transition, and probably this is going to bring you information that you don't even know yet, but we had always, and obviously Dr. Jones came in very much at a point in flux of wondering, how was ESS being monitored? What wasn't achieving well? We were looking for feedback on how that program was going, because it did represent a significant investment by the district. We had been, we had heard that it had avoided some outplacements, but in terms of anything more concrete than that, we really did not hear very much. So I know I was speaking for myself, I'd be interested in any kind of report of any length about how the transition goes, what it had been doing well, what is going to be seamless for us to do, and what we might have to look to for the future for an additional investment at some point in time. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
And I don't know if anybody else had any questions about ESS, because I'd be happy to hold on my list if anybody did.
Continue.
Okay. All right, I can't do this, I'm just going to do this at the top. I had a question to Dr. Jones, because every year we hear about how rigorous the process is for all of your leadership to come in and meet with you for each part of the budget. And this is something I just think it's worth talking about so that it's clear to the public, to the other town bodies, et cetera. But while this budget is lean in so many regards, what is invisible to the public are all the things that building administrators or your central office team asks for, except for Mr. Cullen's list. Everything else is hidden from eye, in terms of what people would say, "This is going to help me deliver a higher-quality education for our children." And obviously, the decisions had to be made, and I'm sure they were hard decisions, but I don't know if you could speak to, and if this is something you'd rather speak to more fully on Thursday, this is a big question, I grant that. But if you'd be able to speak to some of the things that your leadership asked for, and that in the process of creating this budget had to be put off to another day, or ultimately the merit for it wasn't sufficiently compelling, so that's my softball I'm lobbing out there.
Yeah, and I don't have specific notes in front of me, but what I can say is, I think this budget is doing a lot, even though it is a lean budget, in addressing what our leadership and our teachers have said is really important. Take EL, that for instance, is a challenge for us, K-12. And you can talk to our teachers that are out in the trenches, and they will tell you, and so will our administrators, that we need to do more for our EL students. If you talk to our elementary principals, we desperately need to structure differently for that program facilitator, just for the way our elementaries function. That's, that's an enormous thing at elementary. I also, if you look at the STEAM aspect in this budget, we know in high school, we have a new assessment that, you know, the state is piloting this year, I mean, it's live next year, we need to be prepared for that. But we also just need to be more current in what we're offering our students in high schools, so that's a huge investment. Then if you flip that and you talk to elementary, trying to find time to actually do STEAM and science at elementary right now, it's almost overwhelming. Elementary teachers pretty well, unless you're a fifth-grade teacher, teach everything. And we've, we have had so much emphasis on literacy and math and history in the upper grades, you can only do so much. So it's going to be something that they, as a classroom teacher, they don't have to prep for this, and they're going to know their kids are going to have real science enrichment, you know, every six days. So this budget has a lot in it to really move us forward, and I think being responsive to teachers and ESS, what Mr. Mancusi was just talking about, this change is overwhelmingly driven by our staff, overwhelmingly. And I think Mr. Mancusi was probably here a week or two, just like I was when I was new, before he started hearing, hey, we really, we want to see this change. So this budget is very much driven by staff. I would say that, you know, we're, we're doing enough in this budget, because you don't want to do too much either. So you have to be thoughtful, like, and I think, again, with the ESS piece, we were addressing what we're doing at middle school, having DBT out in our schools, having the staff go through that training this year, rolling that out at middle school next year. That following year, you're going to see middle school science is going to be coming. You can already see that's, you know, coming forward for us. We know that what we're doing at high school with ESS, we'll be able to even expand more in middle school in two years' time, but we couldn't do all of that by September. So I feel like we're doing a lot with what our staff have shared that they think is important to them.
Okay, so I guess what I would follow that up with is, if it's something that, if you go back to your notes, and I would categorize it the way Mr. Cullen did, is that I would be interested in hearing, and again, I think it's important for the town to hear, that by no means does this represent everything, I agree about the ambitious points you make, but what were the priority two things that didn't make the cut, is I guess how I would characterize that question. I think that'd be interesting to hear about, and interesting for other boards to know, that we recognize that there are areas that have been identified of need, and if the money had been there, we would have liked to, but it didn't make the cut of priority one. My next question, actually, perfect segue, regard the English, the ELL Academy. In terms of, one thing I wondered, if, is it necessary that it's going to have to be in three sites as determined by level? And I say that because obviously those Level 1 students are so overwhelmingly at the elementary school level. And is it necessary that they're going to, I mean, obviously they're not going to be grouped by grade exactly. You know, if you're talking about 15 elementary school kids, it's obviously a mixing of grades, and that would be, you know, entirely appropriate. But isn't it possible, then, that maybe two elementary schools and one middle school, the middle school fulfilling, you know, for some Level 1 middle school, high school students, I mean, is that part of the flexibility? Are you only thinking 15 from each level in one of those buildings?
And just in case you didn't get a chance to read this packet, because the updates came late, it's on page 25. We did have a question where we've added a large program summary in there, and gives you numbers, because one thing I didn't, we didn't feel like maybe the board understood either, is how spread out the students are as far as why you wouldn't have a full-time EL teacher in a building that may only have one Level 1 student.
I will say, this question came to me when I, as I was sitting here, seeing these numbers, exactly that.
Mike Cummings, Chief Academic Officer. As we, I appreciate that question, because it's certainly one of the things that we've kind of tossed back and forth. And I think one of the things that I would put forward to the board in our, you know, to share with you our considerations. There's unique challenges at every level, clearly. And as you say, when we think about the placement issues, certainly it will be happening across grades, no matter where these classrooms are placed, you know, and by that I mean elementary, middle, or high. The, one of the things that we're trying to also be very conscious of, and one of the main drivers for asking for this program, is it's not only the, in a sense, the economic factor of trying to group kids more closely together in order to give them better service, but it's also to build in supports around the acculturation issues that the students face. And while we've talked about, there was initial, there was some proposal around, well, could we possibly group kids like, say, four to grade seven, and then eight to 12, and try to balance the numbers more. One of the things that our staff have shared with us is the concern that in so doing, the students may not get the appropriate level of acculturation in, say, a middle school as opposed to a high school as opposed to an elementary. Nor with that would their families get the necessary supports, because we are thinking beyond the students in front of us, but also to think about what we might need to do to support families in that placement. I combine that concern with the other factor, and, you know, when I was up here last, last week, we talked about a timeline of 12 weeks, it could go to 15 weeks. That may be, it's an ambitious timeline, and it's one of the things we're going to work on, but it may be necessary to stretch that timeline out at middle and high because of the nature of the curriculum and the nature of the content, particularly if you think about the level of academic vocabulary that those students are going to face in middle and high. It's certainly advanced beyond the elementary level. And this is, it's not only complicated by the fact that the curriculum is deeper and more challenging, it's also complicated by the fact that we have become aware this year, more aware, I should say, of the, of the, the lack of schooling that many of our upper-grade-level students bring with them. So when you bring a student into high school, so compare, for example, a student coming into third grade who has not had much formal schooling and the math that you have to make up, and his older brother is also coming, he's going into 10th grade, and he's had no formal schooling, and the amount of math you have to make up. So a timeline of 15 weeks at the middle and high school may simply not be adequate to not only teach the English and those issues, but also to start to build back a lot of those skills that have been missed because of the lack of formal education over the years.
I couldn't agree more. I mean, that was one of the things I was going to follow up with, so thank you for addressing it already, is that I didn't see, especially at the middle and high school, any way that you could, that would be a miracle, but to turn that around so quickly, I hadn't thought about the math component of it, but even just the language acquisition. I think that was it for me for the English Language Academy, I don't know if anybody else does.
Continue.
Okay. Regarding, once again, the one January 16th memo on, on page six, and so Mrs. Jacobson at the bottom there had already referenced that extracurricular transportation, and I believe this was referenced, but I didn't write it down, so I wanted to hear more about the professional development that has been cut. I know we have talked about that we're trying to do more in-house, so I'm wondering what professional development that we pay for has now been lost from the budget.
We've not, due to budget, we've not reduced any professional development. We continue to use grant funds Title I and the Title III grants to support professional, and to your point, Ms. Maxon, I just want to state, we're talking about outside type of consultant type of work. We have not reduced that. I know that the Special Ed Department is continuing to work with the providers of the DBT program. Dr. Jones mentioned before, in, in response to your question about kind of prioritizing our budget, one of the things that we are trying to be conscious of is that we only have limited time, so we're trying to be very cautious and concentrated in our professional development efforts. I would rather a professional development consultant come in and come over multiple days and not only provide the initial professional development, but then the follow-through with the teachers, actually, they've gone back to the classroom and tried the strategies and skills to meet with them again to problem-solve. That experience, that type of reiterative, iterative process is far more lasting, and it has a far greater impact on practice than the kind of one-day-and-you're-done type of practices. So we're being more targeted. We support our professional development around initiatives this year, you know, as you know, the elementary social studies particularly, but also we continue to work a lot with the K-2 work. And we have continued to support in our budget both the SRBI processes at the elementary and at the middle and the high school.
Well, number one, thank you for your approach to professional development. This language, however, is coming straight from your leadership on page six, so that they reference that as an area where they would financially make a cut. Again, this is on the January 16th document, page six, that list at the bottom from the high schools. So some dollar figure got attached to that and got cut. I think she's talking about the height, like, this is actually the high school, their site budgets.
That I, I'm not sure exactly what would have been cut at the high school level.
I wonder who would know.
Either the gentleman in the back, who are the headmasters.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So when we allocate, and I won't speak for David, but I think generally we operate the same way, communicate quite a bit, but we allocate money for professional development. Sometimes there are particular projects that we know are going to be underway in a particular school year, like, for instance, if we're going to be creating a goal for our building around critical thinking and problem-solving, what we'll do is, you know, because we can't cut a purchase order until that following school year anyway, we'll keep track and keep, keep watch for any specific professional development opportunities that will match with our building goals, and we'll offer them to teachers. You know, when we're, when we're creating our budgets in November of one year for the following fiscal year, you know, it's really hard to predict exactly which professional development opportunities are even going to be available, because, you know, we, we're kind of at the mercy of, you know, the organizations that are out there that are offering them. You know, sometimes that money might be allocated, you know, to, to see if we can purchase materials that we can bring into the building so that teachers can access them, but generally, those are for, you know, professional opportunities for teachers. So when we, when we say we're going to cut that area, that could mean one of two things. You know, we sort of have a max amount that we allow for teachers. So if they are asking for a particularly expensive conference, we generally don't cover the travel expenses for, you know, for teachers, because, you know, to keep, to keep, you know, the budget modest, you know, we might limit what that maximum amount was. So instead of, say, $300 per staff member, it would be $200 per staff member. That would be one way we could cut, we do cut back. Or we just don't allow as much of those travel, you know, of the, of the opportunities that they would be requesting. So that's generally how we would handle that, those cuts.
Sometimes also, we might only send one person instead of two, they come back and share with the department, or something like that, Greg and I might coordinate who's actually going. We might just pay the registration and not the travel. If the teacher still wants to go, they assume that on their own.
Okay, so, so for example, if, I know I went on a program up at the Mark Twain House in Hartford, which the district picked up, so now you're saying something like that, either teachers are now having to pay for their own, or they're not getting the experience at all, or it's, we'll cover some and not all. That, so that, so number one, I definitely understand the idea now that it's for something as yet unknown, but that's the nature of it.
Correct. I mean, the, I think what generally happens is that the teachers are very much in tune and aware of, you know, these proceedings that are going on, what's happening at the state level, the messages that are being sent about the budget. So, you know, I'll be honest with you, you know, I feel like I've gotten fewer requests this year, simply because they know that money is tight. So, you know, it's one of those things where I don't know if we could ever really measure what the impact is without knowing whether or not they have chose not to request something, you know what I mean? So that's, that's where it's a little more difficult to predict the impact.
I think the other thing we look closely for is the support from the department, so signing off on a PD request like that, the funding might also come from a department, but we also ask the curriculum or director of curriculum to sign off on any requests, so we know that that information is getting transferred back to the departments and shared with others.
Yeah, because one thing I would, to, through the chair, Mrs. Vitale, I know that one area where my district has to support us is through the PTA council of the town, that if some, because it, it's a shame to think that, that teachers are being less creative, less thinking out of the box, less looking for resources, because there is literally less money, so what's the point? That is a completely understandable attitude, and yet, how tragic in some ways. So just, you know, I'd just put out there to Ms. Vitale, if you hear anything in PTA council, and I can't remember if that's the kind of funding that they do, I would love to have that, you know, however, that can be publicized and brought back to them, that, I know they support faculty for certain in-district activities they sponsor, but to actually sponsor staff professional development activities, I'm curious if that's anything that would fall within their mission, because I think, because there's so much out there. But, thank you.
Well, I can't speak for PTA council, well, maybe I can, but I, right now, the leadership of PTA council... Well, maybe I can, but I, right now, the leadership of PTA council is really being very open to staff coming to them with any kind of idea that will just enrich the educational experience for our kids. So professional development will fall under that, technology, we've done a table for an art room. I think it's really go to them and speak to the leadership and see what comes out of that. I will say, being a past PTA president and treasurer, I know that individual school PTAs will absolutely fund professional development. Done at the high school, field trips, professional development, just extra materials for the classroom. So I think a lot of these things are going to be just trickling down to school PTAs and to the parent community.
I mean, I know I brought that issue up last week about the, the PTA fundraising and what have you. I just, however that can be additionally advertised, I know I was said it into the microphone many, many times, but new ways to, to reach out to them. So that, that was my question on that.
Final questions?
I have two questions left. The next one was regarding the CLCs and I don't recall how many we were planning. I know that they can take a max of eight.
Right.
And all of them will have some one-to-one component within them. How many are, I apologize. Thank you so much.
Oh, we just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to come up and speak.
You're very welcome. I sense some sarcasm, but, but I, I actually thought I remembered you saying that we might only have three students at this point identified, and yet obviously that is going to be a very well-staffed eight students, I mean, excuse me, three students.
You're Rob Mancusi, Director of Special Ed. You're speaking of the Tomlinson CLC that were open.
Tomlinson and Riverfield, yes.
Yes, the Riverfield CLCS. The CLC at Tomlinson would be similar to the CLCs that we currently have in the district, our most impaired kids who need the most support. So at this time, they do have one-to-one support. We would not, and they max out at eight, we're looking to start Tomlinson projected right now at three. We would not obviously hire all the staff until we had the students that we needed to staff. And the, and the CLCS at Riverfield, we're not looking for one-to-one staffing, we're looking for two-to-one staffing because those are students who are generally cognitively intact. They have social, emotional needs. They don't need the level of one-to-one support that, you know, our traditional CLCs in Fairfield get right now.
Okay. But to follow up on that, the Riverfield CLC comes with a bigger price tag than the Tomlinson one.
Hold on, please.
What page? I'm sorry, this is on the, the January 16 memo, page 10?
I think it's the social worker, but.
Yeah, I, I just, if, if somebody could lend me their, Dr. Jones, if I, thank you.
And what question is that, on page 16?
It's on page 10.
10.
At the top of page 10, and it's the only thing at the top of page 10. It's the two items at the very top.
Calling DC, I'm the Executive Director of Personnel and Legal Services. I think if you looked at page 140 in your budget book, that's helpful in showing the difference between certified staff and non-certified staff. The CLCS at Riverfield is going to have two certified staff, two full-time certified staff who are going to be hired to work there. One is a teacher who we're actually transferring from another school, and the other is the social worker who's going to be full-time there as well. But at Tomlinson, there's only one full-time certified staff, and then we're adding additional FTE in speech and language, but not a full-time person. So that, the difference, even though the staff numbers are potentially bigger at Tomlinson, the non-certified staff is much less expensive. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before you leave, Ms. Deasy, Mrs. Gerber wanted to have a follow-up.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up because I, I did go back, and I know at our November Board of Education meeting, Dr. Jones did give us a preliminary presentation of, you know, some of the big cost drivers that were going to be in this budget. And I, I just, actually, I don't know if this would be to Ms. Deasy and Mr. Mancusi or to Dr. Jones, but I did see that the, the costs that were estimated in November doubled basically to what they are in the budget. And I was just curious as to what the rationale was behind that, because the CLCS was, the number that was in the memo that we received in November was 215,000, and for the CLC at Tomlinson, the number was 200,000. So both of those doubled basically, or almost doubled, I guess, of the 215. So I was just curious as to what happened between the end of November and when the budget was put together in terms of what additional things, or did it just end up being more expensive than you thought? You just hadn't fleshed it out yet? I was just curious as to what the difference was, or what was the rationale behind the difference in the numbers.
I would say we would want to go back and analyze that because it also may be, like in the CLCS, we already have a teacher in place. It's not actually, so when you're looking at program cost, but we're actually moving a staff member that's already on-site with us. So that, that's probably 75 or 80,000 there. But I'd have to go back and look at what, what we sent in November and compare.
Okay. So 75,000 additional, right? Because it.
No, I.
No, no.
But that, the difference between the two, you could look back at that and have that available for Thursday?
Yes.
Or sooner if, when you get it?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I just was curious as to get, kind of, understand what, how we got from 215 and 200 to 406 and 399.
We'd be happy to provide clarification on Thursday. I don't want to respond incorrectly right now.
No, no, it's totally fine. I, I don't need the answer right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And again, those wouldn't all be hired until we actually completely fill.
You have to follow up on the same issue, different, you have one last question.
My last question is that, curious if we have received any preliminary information from the SED audit that we're doing? Anything that would shade?
You will be, I, I got a, an introductory packet. I believe our consultants are going to be in Fairfield and February 5th, 6th, and 7th. So they're going to send me the schedule and I will be, you know, reaching out to board members, parents, obviously staff, to start this.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pitkoff.
My question is actually a follow-up to the question that I asked in the packet. If you want to go to the budget book, page 51, and in our question and answer packet, I'm on page 11.
Current one, that was at the table?
Correct, the current one, yep.
Page one.
51 in the budget book, 11 in the current question and answer packet. Okay, so my question was, why is there a decrease of one full-time teacher at the ECC when there's an increase of students attending? That's the first part of the question. And if you go to page 51 in the budget book at the ECC, it says 13.30 FTEs and proposed for year 18, 19, 12.30. I know, Dr. Jones, you and I spoke, and you said it was because one of the FTEs moved to Stratfield Elementary School to do the pre-K there. My question is, if we needed 13.3 at the ECC last year and we moved one of the six teachers over to Stratfield, didn't we need them at the ECC? Because Stratfield was in addition to what we needed.
Yeah. The Stratfield ECC is part of the ECC, and really what we had an issue with this year in terms of budgeting the FTE was a question of, is that something that we put in the Stratfield budget or the ECC budget? Because it is so much of both. We ultimately went with the Stratfield budget. So if you look, if you go to page 50, you can see.
Hold on, but that's not the question I'm asking. The question I'm asking was, we had six FTEs at ECC, we needed six FTEs at ECC, we opened another section at Stratfield, why didn't we get another FTE? Why did we take one from the ECC and move it to Stratfield? Is what I'm trying to get at.
I, I believe you did get an additional at Stratfield, not minusing one from the ECC. There's still one, two, three, six at the ECC.
So it's down one. But according to the budget book, it's down one. That's where the confusion is.
It's the same numbers of classes this year to next year. There's no change in FTE overall for our staffing of preschool. We just moved where that FTE is housed in the budget book.
Where it should have been.
It should have been in Stratfield because that's where the class is.
Okay.
It was in the ECC.
So to piggyback on the question, more of, we were talking about a special education audit. Thank you for providing the breakdown of students AM and PM in classrooms A through BE, FCD, and Stratfield. I'm sitting here adding the numbers, and we're talking about special education caseloads. If I go by this, classroom A teacher has a total of 34 students between AM and PM and a caseload of 26 IEP students, right? And this is January. We know that as the year goes on, they add a lot more students up until June. Can we look at this?
We can look at this again. I, I can tell you, we had a conversation, I had a conversation about these numbers today. This also is going to be part of our independent special ed review, taking a look at our, our preschool programming.
Okay.
I think we've consumed that 30 minutes quite easily, but before I go to the public, are there any other general questions that people want to ask at this time? Seeing no hands up, we're at the point in the budget where we ask for public comment on the superintendent's recommended budget. And so if any citizens have a comment that they wish to make, please come forward, state your name and address, and address the board. I'm patient. Seeing nobody come forward, we'll go back to the board. Before we go back to the board, the superintendent would like to make one comment. Nobody asked a question on current 17, 18 insurance savings topic that was under review section benefits. You may recall that the board discussed or was brought up to date on the fact that with the state making changes to the partnership 2.0 as of October 1st, and our district implemented those changes early, that we estimated that we would have some savings, but that wouldn't be known until later when we could audit the, every fall when the teachers and our staff get to choose their health plan, and depending on whether it's family or individual or couple or whatnot, the numbers change. And so the staff have done some work in that regard to say, in this year's budget, from our insurance budget, what kind of savings might we enjoy? At the same time, you've also heard us talk about, the board has talked about the increased costs of special ed, the increased costs of other items. Whenever you're trying to balance a budget, there are pluses and minuses every year. But we do expect some savings from insurance, and Dr. Jones wanted to address that question. And then we'll go to the board discussion on changes they might want to suggest.
I, I think it's timely because we were trying to approve the budget by Thursday. And Ms. Munzel, on Thursday, we're trying to have the quarterly report to update you because the insurance number is one that we've been watching since we made this decision in October. And we knew that probably somewhere between a half million to a million dollars was going to be the difference in making that change. And, you know, that's one of the reasons we did it, and we're very grateful that our bargaining units understood why we needed to make that change, because it wasn't something that they took out to vote on their membership. We just changed because we knew we needed to. So we're dealing with two issues right now that I think the board needs to be fully aware of as we're deciding on the budget that could, I think, help in your decision-making. You know, one of them is that 2.3 million that we have frozen. I think it's important to understand what's happening with the current budget because we know that our special education costs right now are running close to 2 million over budget on everything this year, with tuition, with everything. So we know within that 2.3 million, and this happens every year, some years it's more challenging than others, where you have to look at, how are we going to cover the cost to stay whole? And that 2.3 million, at least right now, where Ms. Munzel and I, and our thought process is that we're going to need that to close the special education gap, and then we want to, of course, which we talked about in Mr. Collins' projects, be sure we apply that money as much as we can to get those projects done so that we don't get behind in that area. So the 2.3 million kind of, I, I think really kind of comes off the conversation as far as what can we do with that, because we're going to need it, every penny of it. But what we do have in the budget right now is right, right around a million. And again, we weren't really sure until we have crunched the numbers to see where that was going to be in insurance. And out of that, of course, there will be unforeseen costs that may pop up. But as you know, in the past, this board has made a decision at times and, and over the last couple of years to pre-purchase items. And that may be something that the board just wants to think about. Could we utilize, and do we feel comfortable utilizing a couple hundred thousand in order to pre-purchase, which could help you with some of the discussion you're having? And I know just from the emails, and also Ms. Leeper sent me an email in talking about that 20% that our people are a little bit concerned about. So I just wanted to be sure you were fully aware of that, not show up Thursday, and then see a quarterly report and go, gee, I wish I had known this Tuesday so we could talk about it.
So to put a, kind of a bottom line on that, is that if the board was saying, I wish we had a little bit more money to spend in a few areas next year, if the board said, let's take some of the insurance savings and pre-purchase a textbook this year, that would open up funds in next year's budget because we could allocate money from the textbooks side and put it back on some other lines. There are a lot of moving parts to this, so it's not like you could spend the whole million just to say, well, let's spend it because there are other things that we have to worry about. But that is a subject that we thought the board should be aware of, either for tonight's discussion, for clarification, and for knowledge for next week. Mr. Acer followed by Mrs. Gerber.
So are we, are you basically saying that the decision will have to be made to continue to keep Mr. Collins' projects frozen in order to do these pre-purchases? Or could that money be used for the projects that were frozen, or a little of both?
That 2.3 million I see as a totally separate issue, but I just think the board needs to be aware of what's happening with that 2.3 million. We see getting absorbed in special education costs that are over. And then the remainder of that going towards those maintenance projects. So that you kind of set that issue aside, I just think, I don't want the board to think there's 2.3 million that there are things that are frozen, and I'll give you an example. We have a position that's frozen. So if we don't hire that, you could look at that frozen sheet and think, oh, well, you still have that 170,000. Why don't you use that for something? But that 2.3 million, it's going to go to special education. And then the remainder of that, trying to do the projects. So I just, you put that issue aside, now you're really talking about the insurance savings.
You're saying the insurance savings can't go towards those projects?
No, no, the insurance could be used for a little bit of, a little of both.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mrs. Gerber.
Well, except I, I think what Dr. Jones is saying is that the 2.3 million is special ed and hopefully hypothetically, Mr. Collins' maintenance projects, correct? So the 2.3 million is not just special ed.
Right.
Optimistically. I mean, I guess, obviously, things can change. But your hope is that the 2.3 million will be special ed plus the maintenance part that was frozen. The other things that were frozen will, will remain frozen. But those maintenance products will be thawed.
That's correct.
And so they will come in with the other stuff.
That's correct.
So, so I guess my, my question is though, I mean, because obviously I think, you know, the majority, if not all of us, would love the idea of, of putting at least some, if not all of that 20%, the allocation cuts, and I don't know if other people have other ideas, but I know that's something that's definitely bothered a lot of people. But I guess my concern with the whole pre-purchasing part is based on when Mr. Cummings said that he wasn't sure if we would be able to find a textbook. So knowing that we would have to pre-purchase that before June 30th of this year, correct?
Right.
So if we don't, let's just say that, you know, based on the experiences that I guess Ms. Vigella and, and Mr. Geppeta had, or Mr. Wakeman had, when they went and looked at some of the science materials, they weren't sure if they were going to find anything. So if we don't, if they don't find anything but from now until June 30th, then what happens? I mean, obviously, I guess we would have to regroup at some point before June 30th, but I guess that's just my concern, because then we would still have that. But I guess that's just my concern because then we would still have that money, which would then be in the 18, 19 budget. So I guess that's just a question I have in terms of how that would work if there is no textbook out there that can be purchased before June 30th.
Yeah, and I actually addressed that in the new packet. And again, I know you guys just got this right before the meeting. But it was on page 27, Ms. Leeper asked a similar question. And the response was, I do believe we're going to know as much on June 30th as what we're going to know on July 1, or August. And if we are presenting new curriculum in the spring, we can't roll out brand-new curriculum without anything. So, you know, would that look different in how we would expend that money? Perhaps it's not just on textbooks, it could be something else. But they'd have to have the supports they need, whether that is for the hands-on materials, is it independent collection of different types of books and materials that they're going to use to roll out this course? They would have to have something because we wouldn't want to roll out all new curriculum and courses and then just not have any materials. Yeah. Are you doing that now? Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions for clarification on the insurance savings discussion? And then we'll go to comments about next year's budget. Mrs. Jacobson.
Just following up with that on the science textbooks. Are we saying that there aren't textbooks that you're liking so far across the new possible subjects? Or is it, I mean, there's lots of different grade levels, different types of courses. There's nothing that you're finding acceptable?
I can't speak to the specifics of every course. I can tell you that in my conversations with Ms. Vigella and Mr. Wakeman, there is not an overriding sense right now that the materials that would give us a breadth of options are available. So we're not seeing like three or four potential textbooks. And I'm going to pick on biology, for example. But we're not seeing that level of interest yet from publishers. Now, again, this is based on a curriculum fair, materials resource fair that they went to in, I think it was October, it might have been November. And things may have been updated, but I've not heard yet that that situation has seriously changed.
Okay, thank you.
What I might say, add to that too, is that we're not early in rolling out new next-generation science standards. So if you look across the country, we may need to see what other districts are doing that are having really good success with it because they're using something. So if we're not seeing exactly what we want, it's, we've got to invest in something.
And so Ms. Vitale.
Well, just for clarification, it doesn't have to be the textbooks. Like it could be the Chromebook, something that you know is a constant that that decision's already been made.
Correct. You know, when we know that we've budgeted for some significant purchase, we could pre-purchase those and then it would open up that line item. Correct, you're correct. Mr. Acer.
Obviously, we've heard, you mentioned the emails we've been getting about the 20% site allocation budget cuts. I just am curious from you as a superintendent, are there other areas in the budget that were cut not related to the 20% cuts that we're discussing that you would like to see, if possible hypothetically, if you had money to go to versus that?
That's a lofty question.
Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, you always have priority one and priority two, but we did not make reductions anywhere else in this budget. Is it a lean budget? Is it doing what we feel like it needs to do? Yes. If you're asking, can you always utilize more staff? Yes. So, I mean, that's, that's a tough question, yeah.
Well, I think it's important to hear because that's, that may be a good answer for some of the people out there that are wondering about that because I think there is a lot of confusion also.
Well, there are people who I think are thinking that it's 20% to the entire school budget. And that is a misconception, so thank you for asking that. It is just to the materials supplies portion of the budget, which is a small percentage in that regard. That is controlled by the schools where they make those site-based decisions.
So clarification again on the insurance savings and then we'll move on. Any other clarification on the insurance savings that you need to know? Okay, so let's move on to suggestions that the board would like to make. I asked for public comment and nobody came forward. Okay, so that if the board members want to suggest a reduction in addition or a shifting of resources from one area to another, this would be the time to share those ideas. We're not voting on them tonight, and we don't expect them to be fleshed out in absolute certainty. But by mentioning the ideas, it gives the staff time to think about it and also to document what the actual dollar value of that idea might be, plus or minus. Thoughts that board members want to share? Mr. Jacobson.
First, thank you so much for clarifying the 2.3 million because that was one of my questions, is we have any better idea of what specifically that was going to. So that was incredibly helpful. I, you know, at this point, I can tell you that I am definitely interested in the 20% allocation restoration. And I do have concern about the maintenance projects that are frozen. So if some of that money could be used for the maintenance, then that would be incredibly helpful and then I'm left with a 20% reduction. So those are really my two areas right now. I'm not saying that I'm making a suggestion or an amendment at this point. But it is an area that I am interested in looking at.
I forget which page or question it was, but the exact dollar amount is like 403,000, give or take.
602, I was just going to say that.
Okay, 602. And so if you restored the full 20%, that's 400,000. You're either adding to the budget or finding a way to pre-purchase so that that could be used for that purpose and reduce another line. Or if you say, not 20%, but I could live with 10%, well, then you're talking about half of that. So you ought to come prepared on Thursday or give at least the staff a heads-up as to
I can tell you now.
You're aiming at the full or half?
I'm aiming at the full.
Full.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments that board members wish to make or suggestions that they may suggest on Thursday? Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli.
To piggyback on Mrs. Jacobson, if you look, and I don't know if anybody looked at this already, but in the new memo of today, of today's meeting on page 15, I had already been thinking that of looking for a 10% putback of the supplies and materials with the idea being that I think it's a very useful exercise for any institution to be told, go find some cuts. And then you really can learn a little bit about yourselves of, you know what? We really don't need that anymore. We're not spending any of that anymore. We're zeroing that out for the sake of zeroing that out. And I think that's a useful exercise. So initially, my thought had been to ask for the 10%. I mean, I think it was, it was an honest point of, we need that in order to fund the science. But in fact, that's not what the board wants to represent, how we want to be represented as Fairfield. But then I saw this chart on page 15. And I'll admit, I did a double or triple take. Definitely had to put the glasses on to make sure that I was reading these numbers right, that in fact, in the 2013, 14 school year, we were, we had a considerably higher per-student allocation. You know, and that's five years ago that we spent more. And that this is an area where each administration, you know, that they've needed to chip away a little bit at. And I'm not saying that there wasn't some waste, that again, that this wasn't some form, degree of a useful exercise. I definitely see that. But that has definitely been making me rethink the idea of 10% versus 20%. This chart was quite startling.
Somewhere in the back of my mind, it, and this is a question from Mrs. Munzel. I thought I remembered Dr. Tittle at some point took some expenses that normally were covered in the individual schools out of the student allocation and centralized that. I may be completely off-base, but part of the reduction might have to do with that. Am I completely off-base or do you have a memory about that?
I think you were headed in the right direction, but I'm not sure about the last statement. Copier paper, I believe, was moved to into their, you know, their account that they used, that they got for the allocation.
So it's in the opposite direction?
Right.
Okay. So your point is valid.
Okay. Because actually, as you were saying that, that did sound familiar. I mean, I'm sure we've had slight accounting changes all over the place, and I would want this to be honest numbers. So if it turns out that there is anything else going on with these numbers aside from simply administrators do the same or more with less because that's what this story is telling me. And if it is more complicated than that, I'd be interested in knowing. And if in fact, it does skew the other way, then again, I would like the truer numbers. Because I thought this was something that I would very much show the town, show other town bodies of, this is what we've done and here's what it's impacted. But again, I'm of a similar mind in philosophy to Mrs. Jacobson.
I can stay on the 20% for a moment. The superintendent does need some guidance as to coming back with, okay, I heard the board talk. Here is a suggested solution to that. And so if I can get other board comments on the issue of the 20% and whether there's an interest to find a solution to that problem. Mrs. Gerber.
There is an interest to find a solution to that problem, yes, I agree. I think that if we can in fact use this insurance savings to pre-purchase, assuming that there are materials that we are able to pre-purchase and then have the funds that would then be able to put back in the 20%. And I do believe if I too was leaning towards 10% before I knew that we had these additional insurance savings. But if we do have those and can still keep the budget at the same 3.1% increase, but allow the 20% allocation to be reinstated, I think that that would be ideal.
There is always the option, as unpopular as it sometimes is among other town bodies, for us to say, okay, we're going to go for 3.2, we're going to go for 3.3. Mrs. Gerber is suggesting, let's find it someplace without violating the 3.1. Is that accurate?
Well, correct, because my understanding is that assuming that we have these insurance savings that Dr. Jones and Ms. Munzel just mentioned, we would be able to do that.
Correct.
That my concern was that before I knew about this, that we would, we would have to increase slightly, which was why I didn't want to do the entire 20% but 10%. But assuming, yes, that we do have these savings that can keep us at an overall 3.1% increase as we've already been discussing, but still put back in the 20%, that would be my goal.
Questions and comments from board members who have not yet spoken about any changes they want to suggest on Thursday? So that I get all of those on the table before we have discussion on individual ones. Mrs. Vitale.
Can I just have clarification on the DDS residential? Do we have an answer on that for this year? Or is that part of the 2 million you're counting for special ed?
Where we are right now, because they were supposed to notify for any new students by the December 1st deadline. So now it's just regular accounting with special education. We could get a new student tomorrow at any point in time.
Can I clarify it by this way? The 2.3 that we're saying most of that is going to go to special ed, that includes whatever additional residential costs we may have. It's not 2 million-plus residential costs.
That's taking into account any residential. I just want a clarification on that. I also was leaning towards 10% originally, was trying to find other areas in the budget. I'm of the mindset of Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Jacobson, and Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli. I think I'm just struggling right now whether or not it's 20% across the board. I'm really concerned just looking at the high school per pupil. When you look back, you know, going from at one point 500 to 380, I think it's harder for bigger schools just to find those funds from other areas. You know, elementary school per pupil, you know, you're losing $30. I think it's a little bit easier sometime for elementary schools to get support from their PTAs. So when looking at the numbers, I think our high schools still need, they're expensive. There's a lot of different programs. I think that even just for our taxpayers and our property values, very often, the high schools is what people look at when judging what town to move to. And we need to just concentrate on the reputation. So I would definitely, you know, say 20% for the high schools and the middle school. I'm going back and forth on whether or not it should be 20 or 15 for the elementary schools. But just to defer to the three and to ease it, make it easy for you, I would go for 20 over 10.
Yeah, and let me just, I just want to clarify on the percentage just to make sure that you understand. On page six of the new packet, in, right in the middle where you have the pink line, we had restored 100,000 back into the high school account. So I just want to be sure that you're part of, so they weren't actually 20% because we did restore 50 and 50. However, if what you're asking is to restore, to add 20 more percent, it would be slightly higher than that 403. Because the 403 is the actual, 20% for elementary and middle. And then it counts for the 100 that we had already put back in the high school.
Okay.
Does that, okay.
Other board members that want to suggest changes? We've heard from four. We've heard from four. I see no hands raised?
Quick question regarding what Dr. Jones just said. So I'm looking on page six with the 100,000 put back in for a 475 allocation. Right? Okay. Yeah, and then, but it's showing on page 15, the 20% cut in 18, 19. But you're saying it's not 20%.
Well, what, we started out with the 20% across the board.
Yeah.
This is the actual numbers of where we ended up. And with high school, we met with the athletic directors and the headmasters because there are so many fixed costs. 20% was not reasonable, so we put 50 back in each high school. So I just don't want somebody to think it's exactly 20%. If you're asking us to restore what was reduced, that is the 403.
And so the sense that I'm getting of the board is, whatever last year's student allocation was for elementary, middle, and high school, let's try and get back to that number. It might different, each school will have a different addition to them because of the 20% was not universally put across the board. But try and get back as close as possible to last year's number. Is that, am I reading the board correctly?
Well, I thought multiple members just said they were going for 10% and not restoring the full 20. So now I'm confused.
I was going to before we knew about the insurance savings. Now I'm fine with getting us back to where we were.
Okay, okay.
And that's what I heard, is that given the insurance savings, we probably could make it back to the quote 20%, back to last year's funding allocations or as close as possible to those. Other comments that people want to make on the subjects that we've talked about or new subjects? Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli.
So two points. First, to Dr. Jones, so then to clarify, page 15, that that high school per pupil allocation is actually in fact $414. So that's approximately 13%.
Ms. Munzel? She had to go back in and calculate for one of these answers.
I hope I did the math right, but.
Are you changing the 380 to 414, correct?
Correct.
Wait, page 15 on what?
Page 15 on today's board questions handout.
When you had to calculate the allocation after putting the 100,000 back in, they're just talking about what the difference was initially and then what you did on the chart that you created.
What I, what I did, because we added the 100,000 to the high schools, I took, I converted that to a per pupil amount and divided that by the amount of the enrollment and added that to the original allocation that they were given.
Right, I'm just trying to marry the two. That on page six, it says a per pupil school allocation of 414. On page 15, it says 380. And I just want to confirm that it's, page 15 should be changed to 414, which represents a 13% cut instead of 20.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Conforming one page to the other.
That's, that's all, right. And then the second thing I just would throw out there for the board that perhaps might be part of Thursday's conversation. Obviously, the money that is going to special ed, I understand that. But in terms of this whole notion of pre-purchasing, to therefore have a deduction in this budget to reallocate to that, that would be one approach. A second approach, I'm throwing out this for dialogue. I genuinely am not leaning one way or the other yet. But a second part of the conversation would be that we entirely devoted to purchasing devoted to purchasing the things for the 2017-18 budget that we had wanted in the first place, and that for next year's budget, it is just a straight-up add-back of the 10 or 20%, raising us therefore above the 3.1%. I just want to kind of throw out there that I think both are worth a conversation on Thursday. I agree, so far, there seems certainly to be interest in restoring some of that money, but it's not necessarily keeping it at the 3.1. We might think that this is the argument that we want to make to the town, because we know when we do something like that, we put a bull's eye on it, but that, we would be committed to that argument if that's what we decided to do, to buy in fact, the things out of this year's budget that we had set up front, we need, spend it on that, and that this is a straight add of either the 10 or 20% onto that 3.1%. I just want to put out there that I think both are worth at least talking about on Thursday.
Or tonight.
Or tonight.
To get a sense of the body tonight, yeah. Mrs. Gerber, followed by Mr. Asa.
I personally would opt to keep it 3.1. I think the second we add a penny to the next budget, like you said, it will have a bull's eye on it. I mean, I understand your rationale for bringing it up, but, and not to say that it's not going to get reduced anyway, but I really, truly just think that if we can keep, first of all, I think 3.1 is a very, very respectable increase, considering everything that is in this budget. So, I just, from past experience on the board, and as a parent, knowing that any time the Board of Education adds any money, and I get that we're talking about, you know, it's all how you look at it, but I just feel that for me personally, I would feel much more comfortable saying, "Let's stay at the superintendent's recommended increase of 3.1%." That's personally how I feel.
I would echo what Mrs. Gerber just said regarding the 3.1, but it is kind of enlightening and exciting to hear that there may be this money that we could, could use. So I guess my question, really quick to clarify, hypothetically, if we did, if the board went in the direction that the majority of the board wanted to restore the 20% elementary, middle school, and the balance of the high school, do you have an approximate number of what would be left out of those savings?
That's actually the scary part. I, I think if you ask Ms. Moncelle and I, because it is January, and we still have a lot of the year left, are we going to have a blizzard, you know, in February? And Mr. Coling shaking his head, "No." You know, will we have, you know, one new special education student that is a $350,000 tuition student? You just don't know what you don't know. So anticipating what would happen after the 403 would be way too early for us.
Okay, so let me rephrase that. If we were to take that 403 and move that by pre-purchasing,
Right.
are you confident that you would be comfortable with the remaining balance until we got a little further along?
I am comfortable with that, and I believe Ms. Moncelle is as well. We've discussed this, anticipating that the board may be a big discussion item tonight.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms., Ms. Pitco?
Can I just ask for some information before I make a decision? I know that it was in the tiers that we discussed about last year, and I'm sorry that I don't know exactly where to find it in the budget. I'm wondering what the cost is to do world language in grades three through five? Just curious, if we know that number.
Teacher-wise, is it three teachers? It's approximately, but I mean, that's...
Where's Mr. Cummings? He was certainly part of that conversation.
I did run the FTE on that. I don't have it with me. I didn't know that was going to be discussed tonight, but I can get that to you in the morning.
Any existing board member from past years remember quarter-million-dollar figure or higher?
But grades three through five, we have.
No, it's K-12. You mean K-12.
Do you mean K through two?
I'm sorry, yeah. The existing program or K-12?
Program grades three through five. I'm just curious. The existing program grades, because it's only in here grades three through 12. I'm just wondering how much it costs grades three through five. It was orig, I believe it was in the tiers originally to be cut, but we didn't cut it. I'm just wondering what that number was. I don't have the paper with me.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't have that.
It's okay to have it for Thursday. I'm just saying, I don't...
It's not going to be a...
$360,000.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Thank you very much for having all of that. Thank you.
And, and does that give you...
Something to think about.
Something to think about. Do you have a comment about the conversation around Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli's saying, "Should the board talk about an alternative"?
I agree with Mrs. Gerber. I think we need to try to stay to the 3.1. I, you know, I'm a teacher. I'm all for giving the resources to the staff and the students for what they need to do.
Other comments that board members wish to make on that topic, and then we'll move on. Mrs., Mr. Peterson?
I think I'm the only one that hasn't spoken so far on this topic. I just want to put out that I think I'm very much in Ms. Gerber's camp, that if this is money that we can add back and keep that 3.1 as firm as possible, that would be, that would be great. And just to clarify, in terms of the health insurance benefit, this is not a one-time benefit. This is a thing that will, in future...
It is ongoing. Of course, as with anything, you save money in utilities, and then because of a hard winter, suddenly it goes up 30%.
No, no, I understand, but I mean...
So, health insurance can be volatile.
No, I certainly, I certainly understand, but I mean, in, in general, there may be some limited room in future budgets if we wanted to continue with this, with the supply line. So, that's, that's all I wanted to clarify. It's not a one-time savings.
Correct. I think that's a fair budget assumption, yes.
Ms. Moncelle is shaking her, I think she just wants to make sure...
Okay.
That we're clarifying.
It's going to run out of time.
You're talking about the million-dollar savings this year? That is a one-time savings, because we, we budgeted thinking, the changes, the seat-back changes came after we had budgeted. So, that was kind of a windfall this year.
So, to clarify, that $1 million savings, half million, whatever it is, is already built into the budget that you've been presented. The savings is still there, but it's been built into the budget? Now, I will remind the board that Ms. Leeper will not be here on Thursday. And so, motions that get put forward will require five votes out of the eight of us. If there are four people who have expressed a desire to stay targeted at the 3.1, that I think gives guidance to the superintendent to say, "Bring a proposal forward to try and restore as much of the school-based budgeting supplies as possible, without violating the 3.1." I think that's the direction that's been given, but I want to clarify that, lest I have misunderstood the board.
I don't know about anyone else, but I was definitely adding also the maintenance for this year being done, if possible, because she said there might be part of that 2.3 left over. So it's the 20% per pupil allocation and the maintenance, right?
But that wouldn't be in the 1819 budget that we're voting on on Thursday?
Oh, right.
Right. That's, that's the 2.3.
Right, that's the 2.3.
So, so that's not something that you would need to make a motion on for Thursday, because that is the 1718 budget. So assuming that 2.3 goes to the special ed and the maintenance,
Right.
then, so, so that would not be part of any motions made on Thursday, because that is the current year budget. That's not in the 1819 budget, so we can't really do anything with it unless we individually, I assume, add projects in, but I don't know if that would really work, so.
Okay, so for Thursday, we would have a pretty good idea if that could happen, right? We would be able to know that on Thursday? Okay, yes?
So if there is any wiggle room, that's a technical accounting term, between now and Thursday, that might be able to bolster next year's maintenance budgets, the board would like to see that, but their priority is on the school-based supplies budgets. Am I correct in saying that? Or what? The reason I'm restating it is because I want to make sure the staff have...
We're talking about the 20% cut to the allocation.
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I mean.
But we're not talking about maintenance for 1718. Is that, I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding what you're saying.
I'm trying to think of a way to say it, to get my point across.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, maybe this is what you're trying to get at. I would like to see if we're able, what I was getting at with my question to Dr. Jones, yes, if it's the board's will to restore that 20% without increasing the budget, and I was saying with, I was trying to get at, what's the remainder of the money left, and if the money is, and yes, personally, I would like to see that money go towards making sure we can do as many maintenance projects as possible, but that's not to do...
And that was the point I was trying to make.
That's not to do with, I think with what Ms. Jacobson was saying, is that 2.3 and $2 million going to special ed and 300, whatever it is, the breakdown, so it's kind of a little different, but I don't know if that helps you.
Or another way of saying it is, is that if there is savings beyond the minimal that was mentioned, half a million, then if it's practical, do as many of the maintenance projects that weren't able to be funded this year, and get them done in the spring, if it's practical. You know, find a way to use that money for the best purpose between those two issues, is essentially what I'm trying to get at, if not artfully stated. Any other comments that the board wishes to make as we prepare for Thursday's meeting? Information that you may need? Certainly, you are welcome to submit a final question or two, so that you have the information you need for the Thursday vote. I don't see any hands going up, so we are adjourned. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Pitco, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. All in favor, please raise your hands. It is eight to zero. Thank you very much.